We're about to start, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call to order our regular city commission meeting for March 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes?
Commissioner Parnas?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Here. Here.
Mary Dance.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, with that, if we could have a moment of silence, please, in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It really makes a huge difference to hear the Pledge of Allegiance with this many people in the room. If we could please have the approval of the city commission meeting minutes for the regular city commission meeting for February 19th, 2019, and March 5th, 2019, and our city commission workshop meeting minutes for February 11th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for our community redevelopment agency for November 13th, 2018, December 11th, 2018, the Hillsborough Inlet meeting minutes for January 28th, 2019, and the Education Advisory Board meeting minutes for January 9th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge all those minutes just described.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. I would like to introduce our county commissioner, Mr. Lamar Fisher. Commissioner Fisher? Are you alive? Thank you. City clerk, I'll let you proceed.
We're gonna have presentations by the outgoing commissioners. Commissioner Miller?
Say again. Remarks. Why don't I go last? Is there something? Yeah. Oh, there's only two of us. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just make sure we speak into the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin my remarks tonight by saying that these last four years have been extremely fulfilling, oftentimes challenging, and most certainly rewarding. From the moment I first sat on this dais, I immediately began to get to work. I am so very proud to sit here tonight and say to you that the work has been good, and we will see the harvest come into fruition in the coming months and years. Some of you may be wondering what I did while I sat up here. Others may be saying, "She did nothing." But let me just give you a few of the things that I worked on while I sat here. I worked hard to get the Dixie business residential zoning standards revised. We conducted walking audits of Dixie Highway to understand how to improve it. I launched a retail strategist contract to attract business to Hillsborough Boulevard and Dixie Highway. We successfully linked the design standards for Dixie to those of Pioneer Grove. That was done with the help of the Dixie Highway Neighborhood Group, of which I am very, very proud. That group is led by Ms. Cheyenne Stubbs, and I am so grateful that she and her co-chair, Mr. Tavoris Hill, pitched in and helped us to get that organized and running. I kept my word and fought for jobs not only in District 2, but in my beloved city, Deerfield Beach. I executed a training program early in my term to train several D-2 residents to become licensed insurance agents, and I sponsored career resource fairs where several residents were hired on the spot. I stood up to the MPO and challenged them to begin to communicate to the public in the many different languages that are spoken here in this county. We finally got the state to give us a federally designated opportunity zone in District 2. I championed and voted for the pay-in-class study for all city employees. I sponsored the higher DFB local hiring incentive program. We were able to incorporate the Buddy Playground at Johnny McKeithen Park for those citizens and visitors with physical limitations. The Bisons are doing better than ever. At their last banquet, over 300 children attended. After months of research, meetings, phone calls, we've managed to reclaim the old colored cemetery. And in about a month, you will see that cemetery recreated as the Bran Hilda Richardson Knows Memorial Park and Cemetery. Henry Ford once said, "Don't find fault, find the remedy." I believe that is what I did over the course of my term as your District 2 Commissioner, and I leave this post beaming with pride over the things that I have been able to accomplish. When I arrived at City Hall four years ago, I didn't know what to expect. Sometimes the unknown to us can be a bit scary when the pictures have been painted by some of the loudest individuals around us. But the more time I spent working in this place with the city manager and staff, I began to realize just how fortunate the city of Deerfield Beach is to have a group of professionals who love this city and give everything they have to our residents every single day. I want to thank the city manager, Burgess Hansen. You are the utmost professional, and you have assembled a talented team of people who I have been proud to work with for these last few years. I want to also thank my esteemed colleagues on this dais who have become my family these last few years. I will miss all of you. Todd, you know, I'm gonna miss you. And it has been my greatest honor, not only to serve with you, but to be part of the leadership that brought civility back to this dais. When people listen to each other, even if they don't always agree, progress can take place for the betterment of the people. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna miss you. I urge you to continue to keep this dais in order. If you can keep burning in line, I know you'll be able to do it. I also want to thank those of you who believed in my candidacy and contributed to and or worked on my campaign. Finally, I want to thank the District 2 residents. To those of you who supported me, I will never forget you, and I am grateful. To those of you who challenged me, I am a better person because of it. And I want to thank my good Lord, because every night that I took this seat, Sam, what was the prayer? "Lord, let me make the right decisions on behalf of the citizens of Deerfield Beach. But more than that, let the decision be made according to your will." I feel confident that I did that, and I sit here proud that I was always true to myself and true to my values. Good night to all of you. God bless you, and God bless the city of Deerfield Beach.
My turn.
Godfather?
Monopoly Man. I'd like to say, first of all, I'm humbled to be here. And if I start crying while I talk, it's tears of joy to be able to serve this community. I just want to tell you a quick story. I believe, I sat under a pastor for almost 30, over 30 years, that talked about cultural mandate. He talked about believers should be involved with politics and affect where they live, be salt and light in this world. And I think here and after years and years, the Lord put on my heart to run for this position. And I ran against Pam Militella right over there. And I remember the first polling day that I was, first election, I go down to the church, right down the block from my house, and I'm there at 7:00. It's kind of a rainy day like today, and not too many people are showing up. And I'm thinking, "Oh, this favors the incumbent." And then the few people that were there were not smiling at me. I go, "Oh, great. Lord, I thought you wanted me to do this." But somehow, I prevailed and won the election. And I'm proud to say, as time went on, Pam and I have become friends, and I really appreciate her. I really do. And then, then we go on, and I got a short, I ran for a four-year term, and I had the good fortune to pull a straw and realize, after all that work, I got two years, not four years, with the ability to run two more times. Oh, so much fun to run for office. But as God would have it, I prevailed two elections, and this is winding up 10 years of service in this capacity. I might be the last person in Deerfield Beach that serves 10 years consecutively in this office, and I'm happy that. You know, unlike my fellow commissioner, I wasn't prepared, I didn't make a prepared speech. The 10 years went by very fast. I was so happy. I mean, when the mayor and I came in in '09, our economy was in the worst shape, worst shape it's ever been in America since 1929. And somehow, we had reserves really minimal. We had to lay off people. But somehow, through that, we were able to get back on our feet and build a reserve, build up different income streams, so this should never happen to this city again. And then you just, and thank God, there was money in the CRA, specially reserved money that could only be spent in the CRA. So while the economy was in the dumpster, we were able to do, finish the streetscape on Hillsborough Boulevard, makeover Cove Shopping Center, redo the pier, make the park we just recently made, and a multitude of other things. And I'm really happy to say that it was a very exciting time to be involved with all those projects. And I must, you know, that's why you elect somebody to help direct the resources of the city to do these things. Peggy Nolan back there, she was involved with all of the stuff in the early days. But as I, this whole garb I'm wearing, last November, the city has been having appreciation days, almost around Christmas time, and they put on a screen, "Who does Commissioner Miller look like?" Let me put the cartoon, "Monopoly Man." So I thought, I figured, then I took a picture of my film, and I took my pastor over there. He showed it at church. So I'm walking around church, and go, "Hey, Monopoly Man." But I figure, if you can't laugh at yourself, you're way too serious. It's been my pleasure to serve the city. And God is, you know, one of the biggest questions people have asked me, "What are you gonna do next?" And it's sort of like ingrained that people think, "What's your politician?" "Oh, man, I want to be mayor. I want to be county commissioner. I want to, I want to be the state representative." And you know what? God has not put any of that in my heart. What he has put on my heart is, maybe I could get a job with Parker Brothers. You know, these kids have been playing, the kids have been playing too many video games, and I want them to go back to board games. Except, I don't think I can go door-to-door in Deerfield. Maybe you guys can change your ordinance for me. No, truthfully, this is gonna mark 10 years of service to the city in this capacity. This year will mark 20 years of me going to jail once a week to meet with guys that have been arrested and lead them to Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. But really, what I feel called to now is to serve my church. In 2012, a church started in my house. And here we are, seven years later, and that church has over 400 approaching, 500 people going to it every week. And if there's anything that's been exciting, it's been building that church while I'm able to serve the church. I want to thank all of my fellow commissioners and past commissioners. I want, this manager, he comes under criticism. I love the man. He's smarter than anybody realizes. And the one thing about him, he's very, he doesn't gossip. God bless. And he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, you know, he does his job, and he's smart about it. People would say, "Oh, you're a corrupt city." Corrupt city? We'd be going off in handcuffs if we did any ethical things. We've got the strictest ethics rules in the whole state. It's been a pleasure working here. And I want to, you know, however many days I have left, I want to serve my Lord, who directed me to this position, and now has directed me to tell more people about my Savior. And I bless you all for coming today. Amen.
I'm gonna miss the clerk, too.
Just as a point of, just want to make one point. It's been 10 years I served with Joe Miller from the very beginning. He's won three elections in order to stay here for three years, for 10 years. We don't always agree, but one thing, we made a promise to each other from the very beginning. We start the meeting with a handshake, and we end the meeting with a handshake, no matter how upset we might be, how the vote went. It's been a tradition, and it's been an honor to serve with him. In glory of battle, your kindness, your professionalism, and your class has been greatly appreciated, and I thank you both very, very much. If I could also remind everyone, please, silence your cell phones.
Now we're going to have the oath for Commissioner-elect Hudak.
I'm gonna read, and just repeat after me.
Sure.
And you either say swear or...
Swear is good.
Okay? I, Michael Hudak...
I, Michael Hudak...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
That I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
And the United States of America...
And the United States of America...
A registered voter...
A registered voter...
And resident of the city of Deerfield Beach...
And a resident of the city of Deerfield Beach...
As shown on the public records of Broward County, Florida...
As shown on the public records of Broward County, Florida...
I am being employed as city commissioner...
I am being employed as city commissioner...
Of the city of Deerfield Beach...
Of the city of Deerfield Beach...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
As such city commissioner...
As such city commissioner...
I further swear...
I further swear...
That I will support the charter of the city...
That I will support the charter of the city...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
And the constitution of the United States...
And the constitution of the United States...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of my office...
Perform the duties of my office...
Upon which I'm about to enter...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Michael Hudak.
Now the oath of office for Commissioner-elect Preston.
I, Ben Preston...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
And the United States of America...
And the United States of America...
And registered voter and resident...
A registered voter and resident...
Of Deerfield Beach...
As shown on the public records... As shown on the public records...
Of Broward County, Florida...
Of Broward County, Florida...
I am being employed...
I am being employed...
As city commissioner...
As city commissioner...
For Deerfield Beach...
For Deerfield Beach...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
As such city commissioner...
As such city commissioner...
I further swear...
I further swear...
That I will support the charter...
I will support the charter...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
And the constitution of the United States...
And the constitution of the United States...
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of my office...
Perform the duties of my office...
Upon which I'm about to enter...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Ben Preston.
According to the city's charter, specifically Article 3, Section 3.06, provides for the selection of vice mayor be based on links of prior service. The vice mayor for tonight will be inducted is Commissioner Drosky. If you could please come down. In 2020, Commissioner Parnas. 2021, Commissioner Preston. And 2022, Commissioner Hudak.
I, Todd Drosky...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
That I, that I am a citizen of the state of Florida...
And of the United States of America...
And of the United States of America...
A registered voter and resident...
A registered voter and resident...
Of Deerfield Beach...
As shown by the public records... As shown by the public records...
Of Broward County, Florida...
Of Broward County, Florida...
I am being employed as vice mayor...
I am being employed as vice mayor...
Of the city of Deerfield Beach...
Of the city of Deerfield Beach...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
And will be a recipient of public funds...
As such vice mayor...
As such vice mayor...
I further swear...
I further swear...
That I will support the charter of the city...
That I will support the charter of the city...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
The constitution of the state of Florida...
And the constitution of the United States...
And the constitution of the United States...
That I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of my office...
Perform the duties of my office...
Upon which I'm about to enter...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Vice Mayor Todd Drosky. Next, we have approval of our city commission agenda. Looking for a motion for the approval of our city commission agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Our awards and recognition. Ladies and gentlemen, if any of you would care to leave at this moment, we're to ask you if you just please wait until after our proclamations, and then we can give you a little bit of time to clear out if you'd like. Commission, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we're honored to, and this is on behalf of Commissioner Todd Drosky, who sponsored this, to honor the Jim and Jan Moran Boys and Girls Club. For more than 75 years, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America have celebrated National Boys and Girls Club Week by recognizing the invaluable service clubs bring to communities. National Boys and Girls Club Week shines a spotlight in the 61,000 caring, trained youth development professionals who mentor kids and teens every day in 4,300 clubs across the nation and on U.S. military installations worldwide. For 20 years, the Jim and Jan Moran Boys and Girls Club in Deerfield Beach has provided services to more than 900 young people annually, ranging from ages 10 to 38. The Boys and Girls Club organizations in our state help ensure that our young people stay off the streets and offering them a safe and supportive environment, providing quality programs right here in our community. Please join us in celebrating Boys and Girls Club Week, April 8th through the 12th, 2019, whereas the young people of Deerfield Beach are tomorrow's leaders, and whereas many such young people need professional youth services to help them reach their full potential. And whereas for 20 years, the Jim and Jan Moran Boys and Girls Club in Deerfield Beach has provided services to the more than 900 young people annually, ranging from ages 10 to 38, the Boys and Girls Club organization in our state help ensure that our young people stay off the streets, offering a safe and supportive environment while providing quality programs. It is my honor, therefore I, Bill Gans, the mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, in recognition due hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 12th, 2019, as Boys and Girls Club Week. Sure, absolutely. Before we bring up the next certificate of recognition, would Commissioner Hudak and Commissioner Preston like to say a few words?
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Without the grace of God, this moment of triumph is not possible. I thank you, Lord, and through your Son, Jesus, may your will be done. To you, the voters of District 2, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. When I knocked on your doors, you answered with inspiration and kindness. Thank you for believing in me, and I thank you for your trust. District 2, I am your eyes, your ears, and most definitely, your voice. To the voters of District 2 that did not vote for me, I am your commissioner, too. Your concerns are my concerns, and your frustrations... And your frustrations become my challenge to resolve. And I am eager to serve you as much as those that did support me. To my team, I thank you for your diligence and hard work. Day after day, your relentless toil and approach to success has to be admired. I thank the many volunteers who took it upon themselves to work and to help in the many areas needed to be successful in a campaign. I thank the pastoral community for their prayers and for their encouragement. No matter what church I attended in District 2 or District 1, Haitian or English, I was received well. Thank you. I thank my family for all of your love, your strength, and your encouragement. And my wife, in particular, was absolutely incredible throughout the entire process. Besides her love, prayers, and inspiration, she actually managed to cook me a meal every once in a while. I would like to thank Commissioner Battle for her work and effort to better, to help District 2. It's not an easy job. So her work and effort is greatly, greatly appreciated. I would like to thank this commission for accepting me. It is my honor to work with you to elevate the city of Deerfield Beach to an admirable level of envy. It is our challenge to work together and to serve all of our districts equally. And I embrace that challenge. Thank you all for accepting me and the willingness to go ahead is in front of us, and I accept that. Thank you.
I want to thank the residents who had the faith to vote for me. Now the real work begins. I'm inspired and I'm hopeful that we can bring Deerfield Beach back together. As your District 1 Commissioner, I pledge to support all of our neighbors with their challenges, goals, and desires for a better Deerfield Beach. The election witnessed over 400 additional voters than in 2015. The local election shows more individuals understand the importance of these elections. I've been inspired by all of you. All of your hard work on my behalf, on the city's behalf. You have shown me how much you all love Deerfield Beach and how much I love Deerfield Beach. I've been inspired and excited and honored to be a part of the growth and the progress of our great city. Now is the time for our city to come together as one city and one community and one Deerfield Beach. I want to thank my wife. Without you, I wouldn't be here, so I do appreciate it. My mom and all of the individuals that are in attendance today, who, without any of you, I would not be here. And I want to make sure that I make you all proud. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Drosky, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. I, um, let's not kid ourselves. I know you all are here for me tonight, so... So thank you very, thank you very much. To, to my mom and dad who are here tonight, um, thank you very much. You know, I may be 47, but I think I'm seven to them. And, and then, I'm, I'm okay with that, actually. My wife is traveling tonight and she couldn't be here. She wanted to come back and I said, "No, don't," because this isn't, this isn't a significant event that we have here tonight. And it reminded, it reminded me, rather, of the quote from John Adams back in 1793 when he was talking about the vice presidency. He said, "My country has in its wisdom contrived for me the most insignificant office that ever the invention of man contrived or his imagination conceived." Had he been here in 2019, he'd be talking about the vice mayorship of Deerfield Beach. And, and the reason that I say that is because as vice mayor, I take over, you know, for the mayor. But Commissioner/Mayor Gans, in his 10 years on the dais, has missed zero meetings. So I don't expect to be in the middle anywhere. So I'm thinking, what kind of perks do come with the, the, the vice mayor? Maybe I get an increase in pay? Wrong. Maybe I get to sit a little closer to the middle? Wrong. Maybe I get a bigger office upstairs? Wrong again. So the, so I figure, what do I get? So actually, it was when I got here tonight that I noticed, if you notice in the parking lot, the way that we park, you go mayor, vice mayor, commissioner. So I get to park six feet closer to the door. And then if you check the front door, too, I think my name went from size 12 font to 14. But, other than that, that's all that I, that's all that I get, so... But no, in, in all sincerity, it is my pleasure to serve the city of Deerfield Beach. I have greatly enjoyed serving you the last two years and for the next two years. It is a lot of work that we have up here. And I welcome my two new colleagues to the dais. I look forward to working with you, as well as my two colleagues that continue to be on the dais. Deerfield Beach's best days are ahead, and we're going to need your help. But with all of us working together, it's a new day in Deerfield Beach. Thank you.
I'd like to bring up Captain Brimlow for our next presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, commissioners, commissioners, thank you for having me this evening to present the Deerfield Beach Employee of the Month. The awards committee for law enforcement is supposed to nominate one person each month, but this month, it was impossible to do that. It was actually a team effort, and there was no way to split hairs and see who was doing actually more than anybody else. But when I read the nomination this month, it reminded me to my days of sitting in Human Resources and interviewing prospective applicants for law enforcement. And universally, the answer that comes when you ask the question, "Why do you want to do this job?" It's to help people. It's to help people and serve the community. And the team that was at work on February 2nd of this year did just that. And it is as law enforcement goes. Sometimes you think you're getting into one thing and things rapidly change, and you find yourself dealing with something totally different. So I would like for the following employees to come forward as I tell you what their event, how their event unfolded. Sergeant Cooper, Sergeant Novello, Deputy Williams, Deputy Hernandez, and Deputy Valdez Sanchez. So on February 2nd, it was just after midnight in the Bonnie Lock area, and a residence called in a burglary in progress. It was a home invasion burglary. Occupied, a woman was home at the time and was awakened by the sound of her dog barking and breaking glass downstairs. So the shift responded under the leadership of the two sergeants that are here. They also responded as, as they do frequently in this city. And as they were arriving there, setting up a perimeter and responding to the location, they ended up meeting with the residents and someone did, in fact, try to break into their home. So as they knew they were looking for a home invasion burglar, one of the worst types of criminals that we encounter, and certainly one of the most frightening ones for our residents. And as they were examining the scene, they happened upon some blood that was on one of the back windows that the suspect had broken. Apparently got frightened by the lady and her dog and started to flee from the scene, but fortunately, we had the area locked down. He had no way to go but to flee into the retention lake behind the residential area there. Unfortunately, because of the injuries that he sustained while trying to break in, he was unable to swim. It was damaging. He'd almost cut through, almost severed, almost entirely, his right bicep and triceps, and was unable to swim. And now was drowning. He was halfway out into the lake. So the quick thinking, folks, that you see up here tonight, commandeered a boat from a resident nearby, got a flotation device that we carry in our cars, and immediately now went from catching a burglar to saving a life. They, they forged out into the, the lake area. They ended up getting a hold of him. He could not take a hold of the flotation device, so they actually had to physically subject themselves to some exposures and dangerous things. But were able to take the suspect and get him back to the shoreline despite him fighting them, as oftentimes drowning, drowning victims do. When they got him to the shoreline, they realized that he was near death because of the bleeding that he had been sustaining. And quickly, they deployed some of their own personal equipment. Every deputy carries a tourniquet to save their own life in case something happens. And they deployed their tourniquet to save his life instead. They saved his life, which brought peace of mind also to the resident and to the community, that they know that someone who was looking to do harm in that community is now in custody. He still remains in custody, as it turns out. I don't believe the deputies know this, but he was giving them false information on the night that he was there. One of our deputies used some of the technology that they have at hand with fingerprint reading and scanning to get his true identity, which later revealed that he was a sexual predator. So they did a great job, heroic job. These guys are still in, the guy's still in custody. And after he is tried and hopefully sentenced for his crime there, which we have tons of evidence, including some neighbor's video, including DNA evidence and other things, witnesses, he will serve his time and then he will be deported subsequent to that. So for that heroic effort, that quick thinking, that they have to change that, that mentality from going to doing police action to saving lives, they saved that life that night and they also brought a lot of peace to that community by catching somebody who was clearly up to no good and was out to harm the residents there. So they have been recognized by the awards committee as the employees of the month, and they couldn't do it except as a team, and so that's why they are recognized now.
If anyone would care to leave at this moment, we're going to take just, we'll give you about 30 minutes, 30 seconds to, to step out if you'd like. Maybe a little bit longer.
Hello. How are you? Hello, how are you? Terry, how are you? He's sitting next to me.
De, Ben. Commissioner.
Hello, nice to see you. Richard? Everybody I can. Maybe you could lend him your sign.
If we could have everyone come back and take their seats, please? Thank you very much for your patience. City Attorney?
Item number three. Assigned variance case number 771. Is applicant here? If the applicant is here, would you please state your name, representation, and whether you wish to waive this specific quasi-judicial procedures, which are the formal procedures that are kind of trial-like in nature? You still have the full opportunity to present everything, but it'll be on a more informal basis. Most people do waive it. But we need to know whether you wish to do so. First, state your name, please.
Christina Belt with Kim Lee Horn on behalf of Target.
And do you waive?
I'm sorry, can you explain that again?
There is a right to a quasi-judicial procedure where you have a right to cross-examine with anyone who, who provides any information on this. And if someone intervened, they would have the right to cross-examination on your testimony. Most people waive it. That is up to you.
No.
You don't want to waive?
No.
Is anyone, everyone here going to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as have you got?
Yes.
Did you have anything, Eric, or? No, you don't have, just...
As the item is a variance and the requirement is for forces vote for tonight, just to provide the copy of the location and just for, for you see the signage on the screen tonight.
Is that your case now?
Yes. Commissioner, Vice Commissioner and Mayors. Nice to, nice to meet you all. I'm here representing Target, and if you have any questions, I think that you've seen the, the plans prior, so if you have any questions or anything I can assist with, let me know.
Did you want to present anything as to the criteria for the granting of variance that you met or do not meet?
Um, I believe we meet the criteria to request the variance. It is for, I can go over what we're proposing. front elevation and the left elevation as shown, and also a variance for the addition of an additional sign, the Wine and Spirits, on the front elevation as well. There was a previous variance granted for these signs, and Target goes through branding exercises, part of their national program, and this is just one of the stores that was incorporated with that branding exercise based on the size of the store. This is a typical Target sign that they would put on a store like this.
Anything else that's quoted in the application, ma'am?
No.
Anyone in the audience which should speak on this matter? Back to the commissioner.
We're gonna close it to the public, then? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Anyone care to speak in this item? Now, I see when you come forward, and close it to the public. Commission?
This is the one on Federal Highway, I believe.
Just looking for, we have our light system? Buttons? There's a button down there. Vice Mirzrowski?
Okay, everyone knows me and variances, and I'm less than thrilled with your presentation tonight. By not waiving, you have a different criteria, so might want to check about waiving versus next waiving next time, but that's up to you. So, are we allowed to consider the backup materials part of this, or only what she verbally presented tonight?
No. As a matter of course, on quasi judicial matters, we introduce the staff report and the applicant's application, so you can make that part of the record, and we will note that that is part of the record.
I mean, I would like to do that. I mean, it's, I don't like making the case for somebody, but it is in the backup material that the store, if you go back, Mr. Power, to like the notification slide, the first one, that might show it the best. So, you can see where the Target is, the gray building, vis a vis Hillsborough Boulevard, which is the, which runs from left to right on the screen there. Yes, thank you. So, you can see the setback from Hillsborough Boulevard to the store, and the backup material is 534 feet. And the sign, if they were to build it according to our code, you wouldn't be able to see it, you know, from Hillsborough Boulevard. So, I think, if I were the applicant and I were making that argument, that that is the variance request, the hardship, that the setback is so far from the roadway that following our sign criteria is not feasible, that basically you have a miniature Target sign. So, I think there's, I'm not happy, but I think there's enough in the backup material to support the variance in this particular case.
Excuse me. No comments from the audience. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes. I support the variance. I shop in that store, and it should be seen from Hillsborough Boulevard, a sign big enough. It's the anchor store in that particular area, and it draws people to the other stores as well as to Target itself. And, again, it should be able to be seen by potential customers. Yes, if you live in Deer Creek, you know where the store is. I live in Century Village, I know where the store is, but many people driving by don't. And since it's 500 feet from Hillsborough, I don't think asking for a larger sign is critical and will destroy the city of Deerfield Beach. I will vote for this variance.
Commissioner Hudek?
Well, I guess the question I have is, again, you received a variance to put a sign that's three times the size that the city allows. Now, you want a variance to put a sign that's five times the size that the city allows. I understand the setback is far away, but I also know that everybody knows where the Target is at already. I don't know if we can break this apart. I understand the Wine and Spirits sign of it, but to have a sign that is five times the size that our variance allows, I do have a question about.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudek. Having been here when you first came before us, the first time Target came before us to grant the original variance, increasing it beyond that, to me, doesn't work for me. And I don't think there's been a hardship really placed by the applicant, so that is disappointing. But I do think the point has been made. Obviously, that was taken into mind when we granted the very first variance. To continue to double down on that doesn't make sense to me. I understand the Wine and Spirits sign. I know that's something new that you're allowed to do there. I'm more amenable to that, but increasing it any larger just because that's your branding? I know there are certain cities that have certain rules, that even though it is your branding, you have to comply with what their rules are, and I think that should apply to this location here for us as well. I think the size of the sign currently is sufficient, and it exceeds our code with the first variance we granted years ago. So, I'm not inclined to support this. Vice Mirzrowski?
Is there something that we could support tonight? I mean, is there to...
You could make a motion to, you could maybe separate it if you wanted.
That's what I'm trying to, to take the temperature of my colleague.
I'm willing to allow the additional signage for the Spirit, the Wine and Spirits sign, but it would have to be proportionate to, I don't want to say, yes, we can put that in, and then it's larger than what the existing Target is. I'm not sure with the, you know, looking at the measurements, if, from a proportionate standpoint, if that works, but I'm not inclined to increase the size of the signage. If anything that I might consider would be the south-facing sign, because that is the furthest setback. Increasing the west one, which is not that far from Powerline Road, west-facing, makes no sense to me. Commissioner Parnas?
I'd like to. Like to make a motion that we allow the Wines and Spirits to be increased, and the Powerline sign to be increased, and the front sign that faces Hillsborough to remain the same.
That would be the complete opposite of what I had just requested. If you want to go with that, it's okay.
No, 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 I wanted to go with what you said.
Okay, so that would be the opposite. In other words, the western-facing sign would remain the same. If you want to grant the variance for the southern-facing sign and allow for the Wine and Spirits, that would be all right.
That's my motion.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, that's...
Do you understand what I'm asking for?
Yeah.
Commissioners?
We have a second? Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second? We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mirzrowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Thank you.
Public comment, it's an opportunity for anyone to speak on a matter not on the agenda. No person may use language that would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities, or speak to the personal qualities of an individual. You have the opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Three minutes, and mayor may grant an additional minute.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak, city clerk? Yes, ma'am. Give your name and address for the record, please.
1998 Northeast 7th Street. Elise Miller Plotkin, sorry. I just want to bring up again one thing that I mentioned earlier. My concern is southeast 9th Street and Ocean Way. I mean, it's the street, northeast, southeast 9th Street and Ocean. It's two blocks before the Embassy Suites. I just want, I made pictures for you of the entrance onto the beach here. The erosion is much worse. It's about 50 feet from the gutter to the entrance into the beach. There's very little space. Once you get on the sand, the water is there immediately. And my concern is that if we get a storm or a windy day, because it's such a short distance, for once you get on the beach, there's no stand there at all, that the water will immediately go into the gutter and be a disaster. And I know that the Army Carver engineers said that this section is in critical condition, and I'm very concerned about it. It's not a wide area. It's just from 9th Street to the Embassy, and maybe a little bit where the boardwalk is, where people get married, you know, that place? It starts there, but it gets much worse at 9th Street. And it used to be that I was able to walk all the way from northeast 7th Street all the way to the Embassy Suites when there was low tide. Not anymore. Now, I have to stop way before there and go into the street to walk. But this, to me, is very scary, right at this street, because as soon as you walk on the sand, the water's there, and I'm really worried. I don't think that replenishing the stand is really gonna help, because the water's right there. Like, we need a dune or something, like immediately, I think. It's really scary, that something needs to be done, because I'm afraid when hurricane season comes, because the water's already high at low tide, that I'm really worried. So, I may paint just for you, this is the best one in color, and then the other ones, the computer was running out of ink. So, I just, I'm really worried about this, you know, and I'm not concerned about the other areas, because the area of sand is good. But this, to me, is frightening. I don't want what happened in the Midwest to happen to us, and then we won't have any island at all. So, it keeps me up at night sometimes worrying about this.
Thank you. Could you give to the city clerk, please? Anyone else in the public care to speak? Please come up. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Good evening. Melvin Nass, 3081 Oak Ridge U, Century Village, Deerfield Beach. I'm here this evening to make sure you're aware of the very serious condition of the dockage at Sullivan Park. I'd first like to say that I'm very knowledgeable in this area. I present to you a U.S. Coast Guard Merchant Marine Officers Certificate, which I held from 1994, till I retired. I'm not retired, I also serve on the City of Deerfield Marine Advisory Board, I'm happy to do that, under Commissioner Bernie Parnas's Area 3. The situation at Sullivan Park is, we've built a beautiful concrete dock, but we've got some fixtures that are out of place that cause this matter, that's got to get fixed. I lose sleep at night worrying about on my watch that somebody should reach for the ladder and fall into the water, get hit by a prop, get seriously maimed, possibly killed, God forbid, and the city gets sued. What I'm asking the city commission here to do is, there are six ladders that are absolutely in the wrong place on the tee head at the end. They need to be amid ship when a boat comes in to dock, for on the low tide, when the tide is down an hour and two, before the low tide and after the low tide, a person cannot get off their boat because the dock is too high. So, they need the ladder. The ladder is important, don't take it away, because God forbid somebody falls into the water, you know, off of, just walking along the dock. They fall in, they need a way to get out of the water, a paddleboarder, a kayak, they need to come out. The ladder, there are six of them, that have got to be moved, very simply and very inexpensively from where they are to amid ships on the side. In addition to that, there needs to be six cleats to tie off a boat that comes bow in, and so that the boat on the tide that either is coming in or going out won't be swept under the pier. It would take a very, very experienced boater, somebody of my skills, for 13 years, I've docked hundreds of times my 42-foot drawler here in Florida, and for 30 years in the Finger Lakes of New York, I've docked anything from a rowboat to a 30-foot vessel.
Mr. Nass, would you like an additional minute?
Yes, sir. That would take care of six cleats, and the six moving of the ladders would take care of six docks, but you've built a beautiful, that would take care of six boats, but you've built enough dockage there for another six boats. So, there could be 12 boats docked there at one time, but you'd need to purchase another additional six ladders and six cleats and install them. That's what I'm asking you to do. And I appreciate you hearing this matter and becoming aware of it, and let's hope there's no accident. We need to make haste here. It could happen tomorrow, the accident. Thank you very, very much. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer that offline. I'd be happy to come in on my own time and speak with whomever you have looking into this for anything further.
Great.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. First, I'd like to welcome and congratulate our two new commissioners. Welcome. We look forward to you doing some wonderful things for the city. And congratulations, Todd, for that inevitable position that you've now... So, first of all, Michael Hudek made some promises on sober homes during his campaign, and because this is an issue that is C-wide, I really hope that he'll go into a little bit more detail in the near future on how he intends to lead the city in restricting sober homes in our city. This is a problem throughout the city, and any help will certainly be much appreciated. And for the benefit of the two new commissioners, to the DA's and all of the citizens, I'm wondering what the process in the city is used to decide the capital projects, and what was specifically used in determining the projects for the revenue bond. The Tigna Center and the Northeast Focal Point were determined to be number one and two, but how has that arrived at? I've been told numerous times that the capital improvement element is only a wish list, so the benefit of us all, could you explain the process for determining the future spending on capital projects? Also, at the senior center workshop meeting, I asked about the city considering a breakout of the demolition of the senior center buildings that aren't being used, instead of having it done by one design-build contractor. A design-build contractor would most probably subcontract for this effort. Several major benefits to the city, if this breakout was considered and put in place, would be that we would contract with a supplier, and whose business is really demolition and not design-build. In addition, it will provide the city with the opportunity to uncover any potential issues with the land well ahead of the actual build, and gives the design-build contractor a clean slate to work from, as well as a schedule benefit. So, the city and taxpayers would save money, unknowns would be uncovered before the build starts, and there's also that schedule benefit, and what I understood, it was at least two weeks. So, I hope the commissioners would consider that approach, save money, lower time, and have a clean slate. And lastly, now that the elections are over, I hope the commissioners will debate changing the election back to November. Fort Lauderdale just did that, and I think they saw the light in the savings and the reduced impact to the voters. So, I hope that that will come up for debate in the near future. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. Congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Todd, also. I'm coming up here to congratulate you guys. Also, my concern is now, I would like for this city to come together. The election is over, we need to work together, okay? I hope we can do that this time. I hope the community come together and maybe have a big day that all the races will come together. That's my concern with the city, and also with the employees, be fair with everybody. My concern also for the election also, I think the election do need to be moved back. I was one of the ones helping during the election, I was picking up people. There were some people that was handicapped, all of them a little handicapped. There were some people that was handicapped, all of them a little handicapped today. At Park Ridge, the ones that was handicapped, that had walkers, had to walk so far because of the school security and how they closed the gate off. So we need to make it a little better. And for those that's handicapped, I know the city have the little buses that, with the handicapped trucks, we got to get a little involved with the old folks. Also, I'm concerned, um, in right across from the high school, I think called the practice, I met a lot of people in there. There was one guy didn't have a stove in there for two years. They have roaches like crazy in there. The people in there need help. They're old people. I met a couple that don't have any legs, that don't even get out their apartments. So I want the city to come together. You guys consider getting with these people and helping these people. I heard Mayor that you was there, you were supposed to come back. They say you never came back. But please, please, we need some help for those people in there. Thank you.
Marty McGeeery, fourteen forty-two Southeast Sixth Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I don't know what the schedule is for your, um, maintenance of the streets and so and so forth, but there's a small street, Ninth Terrace, right in front of the, um, uh, fire station, Ninth Terrace Fire Station. They are Hillsborough and Ninth Terrace. That particular road there is a narrow, small road, but because of the fire engines and the waits and the cleaning of the fire engines and so much water, you know, goes down there, that street seems to wash out and pit out very fast for some reason, I don't know. So maybe if the city could look into that, um, now there's a couple of houses along that road now that they have refurbished and redone their fronts and done a lot of, you know, upgrades for that particular street and it looks really nice. But I think most of the problem comes from the fact of cleaning the fire, the engines, and they're so heavy and they go down and back and forth along that road. And so that particular street needs to be looked at, I think, as to just a little bit extra general maintenance. And sometimes when the water is so much and there's a lot of pitting holes and all, you don't realize how deep they are sometimes. Now, the city does come by once in a while and they put a little, you know, they try to fill in, I think, once in a while, but I don't know whether that's, street needs more attention or, it needs more attention, but what could be done, you know, on a long-term basis, I don't know. Um, I'm not into street maintenance, but I know there's a problem there. And we do want to get our fire engines out quickly, whichever direction they're going, whether they're going out to Hillsborough or they're going to go back down into that area. So just a little concern. So thank you very much for everything and good luck to all of you and we look forward to you doing good things and great things in our city. Thank you.
David Savinsky, twenty West Burey, Deerfield Beach. Congratulations to our new commissioners and our new vice mayor. And, uh, thank you again, Mayor, for all your hard work. First thing I'd like to bring up, I think I mentioned it last time, was Hillsborough Boulevard and, uh, the speeding that happens there, especially on the weekends and late at night. I was just thinking, you know, if there was a motor officer sitting there on the exit out of Century Village, you know, on the right side, sitting there in their motorcycle, uh, excuse me, between, let's say, ten o'clock and one AM, uh, that seems to be a real favorite drag strip, uh, starting off point for the, uh, the superbikes and the noisy little sports cars. And I think the city could generate a tremendous amount of revenue, just, just off of that spot alone. Just a consideration. Uh, also, I'd like to take just a minute here to, to thank the mayor and the former commissioners that did support the parking sticker thing. The new commissioners are fortunate, they missed the, uh, the, the large event last meeting. And, uh, again, thank you all for the support. I think it's really important for, for Deerfield Beach to look to the future along with the, the state as well. We all know that the state of Florida is growing leaps and bounds. The people are moving to Florida to live here, either to retire permanently or because of all the opportunities here. I think Deerfield Beach would, would benefit greatly if they could somehow, uh, come up with ways of promoting Deerfield Beach to solicit more permanent residents. It is the future of Florida. Traditionally, we've counted on tourism and snowbirds to round out our economy. I think we're going to continue forever with the tourism. Bless their hearts. Visit, leave your money, go home. Great, thank you. But I think the future of Florida and Deerfield Beach, if we participate, is to, to, to bring people in, to become part of our community over the long haul and, and to support our constituents rather than, uh, people who are here don't, aren't fully vested. And, uh, I received an email blast, uh, that basically said after the last meeting, now the city knows they have to treat us equally. I'm sorry, constituents and temporary visitors are not one and the same. So thank you all and, and let's look forward to the future. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Rita Massey, three forty-nine Northeast Nineteenth Avenue. The S curve is in very, very bad shape. The, um, owners are not keeping it tidy, specifically across from the Wyndham where the, um, I really don't even know what is the, the souvenir shop is. That corner is so bad, cigarette butts in the street. The other corner where the building is empty, where the, uh, ice cream place, the yogurt place used to be, terribly disgusting. Don't the owners have to maintain their property? I mean, this has been forever, ever, I mean, thirty years I've been going with the same problem. These people do not clean their property and apparently they don't have to clean it. The street cleaners don't come to do it. It's a mess. It's horrible. And we can't blame it on, on the kids now because it was before the kids got here. I really wish somebody would get on the stick and have these property owners maintain their property because it looks terrible. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Joe Chansey, residence of Tolman Pine. Congratulations to all the commissioners. Commissioner Hudek, I believe you are over our guard district, uh, of our area, excuse me. Just, uh, two concerns along Third Avenue. We don't have enough lighting, street lighting. Not sure if you made aware, but I'm pretty sure you were at one point or another, but, uh, I guess during the expansion of Third Avenue, I don't know if that was ever brought up, but on the eastern side of the road, it's, uh, not enough lighting. I mean, if you go further south towards where the hospital, there's lighting on both sides of the street. So apparently that was part of the plan, but when you go further into the neighborhood, you can't, um, you know, most people would like to jog, but afraid to on that side because it's not enough lighting. Um, also, there's a four-way stop sign there that people tend to not recognize. So there's something that, the lighting system, some, I don't know, something to acknowledge that people know that it's a four-way stop sign. I mean, it's a perfect, uh, median between Dixie Highway and ninety-five, so most people would take that route to go about their way. So those would be the two things that I would like to get addressed, uh, if there's anything you can do something as soon as possible.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else for the public?
Sherman Gammidge, fifteen twenty, Southwest Third Terrace. Mr. Preston, Rome wasn't built in a day. It's going to be sometimes you're not going to be able to get what you want. It's going to be sometime you're going to be denied. But as residents in District Two, as long as you fight, we don't care about the no's. All we want you to do is fight. You want to be that voice, you're going to be their ears, and that's all we want. We want a fair chance. At the end of the day, you supported me ever since I was sixteen. So that's why I didn't, I didn't support you for no favors. I supported you for the citizens of Deerfield Beach. I just want you to do what you say and be the man that you always been and represent us to the fullest. I respect you to the end. You've always been my friend, ever since I was a kid at Deerfield Beach playing football and you used to come to the games. Okay. Okay. I won't do that. But, um, as residents in District Two, all we want you to do is do what you say. And I'm sure you'll do that. And thanks again and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Katie Frytag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. First, I'd like to thank the new commissioners that will be taking our city to the next level. Um, I know that there's bigger and better things to come and I appreciate your leadership and look forward to you applying your experience and your knowledge to the needs of our city. Recently, in the last couple, month and a half or so, we've had some really great events going on in our city. We had a fabulous sip and stroll and, uh, family fun day and even a fabulous car show this past weekend. All of these events were sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Deerfield Beach and we do appreciate the city's cooperation in these events and look forward to doing many more. The Rotary Club has a fabulous, uh, Italian festival coming up in April and we would also appreciate, again, we know that the city is already helping us out, but we appreciate anything that they can do in the way of helping us advertise these events. And lastly, but not least, most important, is the Deerfield Beach Women's Club is celebrating our one-hundredth anniversary of formation this year. And we are celebrating with a centennial luncheon on Saturday and there are a few spots still available, so if anybody wants to attend, please see either myself or Ms. Marty McGeeery. We would appreciate and love to see everybody there. I got your reservation already.
Thank you.
Linda Ruiz, four twenty-five Northwest First Terrace, Deerfield Beach, The Palms. I just want to congratulate Commissioner Hudek and Mr. Preston and to the mayor and the other city commissioners. I just want to say, in all your doings and everything, don't forget about the seniors. Fifty-five plus, even if I don't look like it. Okay? So I just want to make that, you know, an issue out of everything that's going on. Don't forget about your seniors in the community when we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Isla Abdul Aziz. I'm from the palms of Deerfield. I want to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Hudek, Commissioner Preston and Vice Mayor Todd. I like you. Yeah, for some reason, I, I like your spirit.
For some reason, we're unsure why.
I don't know what it is. I'll find out. But anyway, I want to say this. I can say this because I know Commissioner Preston, uh, not personally, but I know him to be a person of his word. I know him to be at the palms of Deerfield when, uh, what's the mayor before Gene?
Nolan.
Nolan. Him and Nolan used to sit there and watch the children when I used to give shows, I'm into theater. So I give a lot of things for the children. Whenever I called on Preston, he would come. When the children was doing their garden in the back, he said, "I'll buy pizza for all the children." He did in that neighborhood. He did, he did come to the palms every chance he got. He got involved. He was there with us a hundred percent. Believe that. When, uh, dear beloved departed Mayor Gene Robb came on board, you understand, she and Preston were there. I can just say that he worked with all, all of the mayors, came to the palms. I'm looking for you. Okay? I want to see your face in the palms. I'm serious. We need you. You hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If I see anybody come forward and just address a couple of the things. Uh, Ms. Placken, I'm not sure what we can do, but we will look into that concern with the, um, beach erosion over in that location. And Mr. Nass, we will make sure that staff gets with you. Um, I'm not sure if you were here as a representative of the, of, of the Marine Advisory Board or not, but we will make sure that staff gets with you and takes a look at that. The capital, um, projects process, we can get that to Mr. Sullivan so he can understand exactly what we're looking to do with that. As far as Praxis, yeah, I definitely was out of practice, Praxis, and I've been out there. I'm not their favorite person there, meaning the owners of Praxis. The residents are fine with me because when we put the lights in, when it was pitch black out there and we fought to make sure they put the gate back up that was broken, this is all during the hurricane that we were out there for that. Praxis ownership, uh, they've tried to set up meetings with me. They have never called me back after that, after trying to set up the meeting. They're not, they're not, uh, they're not fans of mine, but the residents there have called me. We have reached out to individual agencies to work with them many times on that and we will continue to do so. If anybody has an individual issue, please call it. It gets a little dicey as elected officials, when we go on private property and start bringing up issues, it's better to handle it through the proper agency so we don't get in trouble. Ms. McGeeery on, on Southeast Ninth Terrace, uh, we will make sure that staff takes a look at that.
Yep. That's actually part of the street resurfacing and drainage project.
Yeah, I say that.
Thank, we will make sure that's addressed at that time. Mr. Savinsky, um, we, we will see if we can get a motor detail out there on occasion to, to try to deter that. Many of you may have heard that we had a terrible accident, uh, in which a young lady lost her life, Deerfield Beach resident lost her life, uh, a little over a week ago with excessive speed late at night and drinking and driving. So, um, it, it's definitely something that we need to look at and address. Um, as far as the S curve, I, I don't know what the code enforcement, uh, situation is with some of those buildings, but if we can look into that.
Yes.
And make sure that that's addressed.
Yeah.
Um, as far as Tolman Pines, um, we will get staff out there to take a look at it, see what we can do. Um, I'm sure the new elected official, officials will be taking hold of that as well. And, uh, Ms. Ruiz, we will do not forget, we will not forget the seniors out there. And actually, I just spoke with her about coming out to the Palms. Um, Ms. Aziz, you may not have seen me out there because it was pitch black during the hurricane when I was installing lights and getting your generator back operating and bringing water and, and, you, I didn't see you, but I was there. We hung out for quite a while.
I was in Chicago.
You were in a better place than we were at there, I can promise you that. But I tell you what, I'll, I won't have you talk from the audience, but I will promise you that. You'll see me soon. Anyone else? Yes.
Item number four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, authorizing execution of agreement number one to the existing maintenance agreement dated November third, two thousand and sixteen with the Florida Department of Transportation to add four additional crosswalk locations for the maintenance of stamped, uh, asphalt sidewalks in roadway warning, light and rectangular flashing beacon signs, uh, Long State Road eight-one-eight between Southeast Third Street and South, uh, Northeast Seventh Street.
Staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, um, this is just, uh, a typical agreement that we enter into with the Florida Department of Transportation to add four additional crosswalks that we will maintain. Uh, we currently, I believe, maintain eight as it is and there is no issue with this. And there's very little to no impact financially.
Okay. Commission, uh, anyone from the public care to comment on this item? I think I'm being faked out.
Katie Frytag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. More crosswalks are great, but if we don't have police officers out stopping people from running people over in the S curve, the crosswalks don't mean a thing.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If I see anyone from the public, and close it to the public. City manager? Do you have your light on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I hit it earlier. Whoops.
Commissioners, looking for a motion? Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, I would support this. I think crosswalks that are marked are excellent. It is state law that as soon as somebody puts one foot in a crosswalk, traffic stops. I ride with the police and it's something they look for. I'm sorry, they can't be everywhere all at once, but in the days that I spend riding in a patrol car with the police, it's something they specifically look in a patrol car with the police, it's something they specifically look for, respecting a crosswalk. So adding crosswalks are a good thing, and I will support it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion to support this.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number five, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing execution of District Four Maintenance Memorandum Agreement for painting mast arm assemblies located at the intersection of State Road 834 Sample Road at Northwest Fifth Avenue.
City manager?
Yes, this is again another maintenance agreement, which is typical. We have these throughout the city for mast arms, and it is for painting. I believe the cost is right around $10,000.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. I like the black and the uniform, uniformity of all of the mastheads, but I have driven around and I have seen some of them peeling. So I just question, what is, and I understand in talking to the vice mayor, that there's about a 10-year lifespan on that paint. So in 10 years, potentially, we could have a bunch of faded, chipped, peeling mastheads all around our city. So I just wonder, has anyone done a cost estimate on what it's going to cost to take those down, strip them, and repaint them? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment on this item? If I see anybody come forward, and we close it to the public. Commission comments? Vice Mayor Jawski?
I actually had a good conversation with Mr. Good, and I was hoping that he could come to the microphone if the city manager allows, and we can further that discussion.
I'm sorry, the mayor was asking a question. Yeah, but sure, Mr. Good could come up.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, congratulations, commissioners, and to your appointment for vice mayor. So you want me just to go ahead and just give a brief explanation on this here, then?
Just recap what we talked about. I think that'll help answer the resident questions, and it'll bring out more information, you know, about this particular topic, and then if there's anything you miss, I'll, I'll jump in.
Sure. So what happens is that we have mast arms that get installed by either the county or the state for signalization. The standard installation is with galvanized. They don't put any color on it, and so it looks very bland. So we have a lot of light poles and mast arms that are solar black, and that's what we asked them to do, is to paint them solar black. Well, the FDOT folks say, well, that's a, an improvement, because FDOT isn't necessarily going to do any improvements at their cost, so the city has to do it. When the city requests an improvement, it's sort of like the prior item here, when we put in the LED lights, you know, we own the improvements, and so then they say, well, then you will be responsible for maintaining that improvement for as long as that improvement's in existence. So what'll happen here is that these light, or these signalization lights, when the paint fades and peels, we will be responsible for maintenancing them and restoring the color back to the mast arms. And we won't take them out, it'll just be done in place. It'll just be, you know, a maintenance component to that. So those typically will run us about maybe anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000. Just depends on where the location is and the type of MOT that would be required in order to be able to do that installation. But again, as you correctly heard, was, it was a 10-year life cycle. That's about a 10-year cycle process that we would be expecting, that we would have to deal with. And we do, and we do budget for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Partes?
Mr. Good. I understand that they look bland. Do they function whether they're painted or not?
Correct.
How many lights do we have in the city of Deerfield that we paint?
All, I believe most all of our light poles and...
About how many is that? Couple of hundred?
Between, between signal lights and poles, absolutely, yes.
Okay, at $10,000 apiece. We're talking a considerable amount of money. Is it worth painting at all, since 10 years from now, it's going to cost us more than $10,000 or $12,000? Prices don't go down. In 20 years, what it'll cost us? $15,000, $18,000 a pole? Is it worth painting them, or leaving them the way they're manufactured?
Well, I, I think it's, if I may correct for a moment, when you speak about hundreds, I was thinking of street lights and mast arms, and we don't have that many mast arms. The only ones we're, we're being responsive to, or being responsible for, are the mast arms that signalize intersections. So there's a, a large number, I'd say maybe 30 or 40 of them, but, and you talk about, what does that right of way look like? I think the aesthetics are very, very important when it comes to the character of a community. When you don't paint the poles and they start looking rundown and rusty, it becomes an eyesore, and there's an adverse reaction to the community when there, when there is an eyesore. So the whole point behind having these poles painted in uniformity is to maintain the aesthetics and the value of the community.
Who looks into what kind of paint we're using?
That is typically approved by the FDOT.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Houdak?
When do we, how do we determine which mast arms we're doing next? Because like the one on Hillsborough in 95 is also, it's all rusting and peeling.
So that particular light pole has already gone through the process and has come before this commission here recently. It is going to be replaced relatively soon.
Now, I noticed that there's a lot of rust on them, so does the paint prevent this rust from happening, so that would go along the lights as well, with the mast arms as well?
That's correct. It will. And that particular light pole we just spoke about in 95, that whole pole structure is being replaced. FDOT recognizes that.
Commissioner Preston?
What we're voting on here is the, the Maintenance Memorandum. Do we have a maintenance standard in place?
For these light poles, yes, sir.
Okay. And see, my, my thing is finding out what would be the most cost-effective way to be able to deal with that. Other words, if we were looking at it, for an example, every six months, whatever the case may be, that we could say, okay, we can determine that we're having some deterioration in the existing paint, and that we'd be able to deal with that. Do we have, right now, any type of policy or anything that when we see something, that we can fix it?
Well, we are, we don't have a policy in place, but we have to work with DOT with a maintenance plan, and part of that is doing the inspection. That's actually in part of the document here, where there's, you know, where we are required, like on an annual basis, to inspect them. Of course, they have the right to inspect them as well, too, and if they find that there's a need for that, they will notify us and say, hey, you have to have this repainted within a certain period of time, and then we would certainly do that. But we do our own, you know, review so that we can prepare ourselves when we go through the budget process. If anything that we see as being needed, we will identify them and bring them through the budget process. Thank you.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, accepting the results of Broward County Campaign Board for the General Election, which was held on March 12, 2019.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Close it to the public? I think they spoke on that day. I think they already spoke. Commissioners, Commissioner Partes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would like to make that motion to approve, and I would like my friend next door to second.
So be it.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution of the City Commission authorizing the reallocation of $60,000 of law enforcement trust funds originally designated for the Police Athletic League to be used for the purchase of equipment, facility modifications, and other materials meeting the statutory requirements of Section 932.705-5 Florida statute for an operational and tactical intelligence center authorizing the use of $21,250 from the City of Deerfield Beach Crime Prevention Fund to cover the remaining costs for the OTIC.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, I'd like to have Captain Brimlow give a brief overview of this center, because I believe there may be confusion out there with the level of electronics and things of that nature. This is a center that will be operating 24/7/365, and it's not your typical hardware that you would buy at Walmart or Office Depot. Captain, thank you.
Yeah, as the, as the city manager indicated, this is to be a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operational center that uses technologies that are already out there, that we are not leveraging currently for investigative purposes, but also for our response purposes. So as deputies respond, you know that there is a timeframe from the time that a call comes in to dispatch until they actually get to the scene. That time, during that time, three and a half to five minutes of response time, we are losing all of the tactical information that would be available to our deputies. That information might be something along the lines of cameras that might be in our parks, that might be license plate reader information, that might be information, say we have a missing child, that might be information on sexual offenders that might be in the area. There's a lot of information that is lost to our deputies in responding to those kinds of calls. This center would allow for that. This, this would use our existing facilities now. It does not use taxpayer money. It uses monies that have been seized or forfeited by criminals in the, in the investigations that we have already completed. So those funds are already there in our account. Because of the nature of it, for example, one of the expenditures on here are for some 43-inch monitors you'll see, they're rather expensive, and the, the reason why they are expensive is if you can envision a wall that is a video wall that has to be built, you need to use the highest quality of cameras, because we are looking for details that some camera may have to zoom in 10, 20, or 30 times in order to get information that we need. And we have to have the ability to take an image that might be on 1/16 of a screen and actually expand that up, perhaps even to the entire wall, if we were to have a major incident, for example, something at our July 4 event, or any other event where we might need to have a lot of information coming in. In order to do that, you have to have seamless connection between these video monitors, because you have to have zero edges, no bevels on the edges. You have to be able to expand and contract video across these screens. It's a lot of high-tech resources that are involved in that. You can imagine if you were to take even, I mean, as I walk up here, I can feel some of the, the heat that comes off of these televisions, but the, the heat that's generated by a normal television that you might be able to get at a retail outlet store generates an enormous amount of heat. If you were to install something like that in the center, you would have failure of monitors and replacing monitors repeatedly over and over again, because, just as an example, monitors that are on the bottom, they, they have heat that is being generated behind them going upwards. The videos on, monitors on top are taking in that air. It overheats the computer equipment, and it's very sensitive. It's expensive technology, but it's technology that citizens of Deerfield deserve to have leveraged on their behalf, and if there are specific questions about any of the particular items, I'd be more than happy to try and answer that. But that is really why there is a cost of, this is commercial-grade equipment. We have visited several different centers and have looked at some of the failures at centers, where they've had tried to go a different route, where they've had failures along those lines, and have taken what we deem to be the best of those technologies and implemented it and put it in for implementation here in Deerfield.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Partes?
If we approve this, how long will it take to get it up and running?
The, the contractors that we have are ready to start immediately. I mean, we would, we would start on this immediately. I, I would, this, this is something that, if you look around at your sister cities, they would all love to have something like this. This, this is the future of law enforcement in many ways, to be able to leverage the technology and the information that's already out there. Deerfield would be the first that I know of in Broward County that would have this type of an operational center in place. And it, well, we already have other cities, Boca Raton is looking at us, Lighthouse Point is looking at us, Hillsborough, they're all looking toward us, because they know that this is something that those police chiefs would dream about having, and their citizens could benefit from. But the, the problem is, is in order to implement something like that, you need a very diverse group of talent. We happen to have that in our command staff here in Deerfield, so that's where we're able to go with that. So that's, that's, you know, you, you have to have the right mix in order to get something like this launched.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Lilia Ricardi, 1121 South Military Trail, Street 293, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33442. Congratulations to all our new commissioners. It's an honor and a pleasure to all of you, and of course, our vice mayor. I just wanted to say, regarding this matter that is coming before you, I hope you will take under consideration not only what the importance is of our residents, but the importance is of who tries to harm our residents. And that is where we are very fortunate, if you listen to our prestigious law enforcement who has just spoke to you, that we have advancement on our staff, we have advancement with their knowledge, their practice, their experience, and what they bring to our city, and it's an honor and a pleasure that we can stand before them and stand with them. As far as not only the police, we also have the education and the knowledge. If you look into, the cities and counties around us always look towards Deerfield Beach, whether it's fire or police. They always want our men and women. So please take that under consideration for this matter, because we're very important, and I know you are too, and your lives and your family are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments? I will say this, I, I fully support this. I think this is, puts a sleep some bounds over some of the other cities here in Broward County, and I think this is something that our citizens are going to reap the benefits of very quickly.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support on behalf of the city to applaud for funds from the Wells Fargo and U.S. Conference of Mayors Community Wins Grant Program to fund the Business Incubator and Accelerator Program, authorizing second application for funds from the U.S. Department of Economic Administration to fund the Business Incubator and Accelerator Program.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, this, staff is just asking for a letter of support so we can submit this grant. This is procedure that we go through with almost all of our grants. They come to the city commission. Quickly, if the city commission would like, have Ms. Mori here that can explain to the public what an incubator program is, if Mayor Gans or...
Commissioners, you're all right with that?
Yeah. Ms. Mori?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Jawski.
You just might need to speak right in the microphone. Just, I'm sorry, a moment. Can everybody hear back there? I'm having trouble hearing.
I don't feel like I'm, I can't hear myself. So, is that better?
Little better.
Maybe I should... I think that, is that better?
Yes.
When you speak across it, maybe? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Chris Mori, Director of Economic Development, congratulations, new commissioners. So, as the city manager just pointed out, it is standard operating procedure for departments to bring grant proposals to the city commission for approval before making application. The question is, what is an incubator? It's something that we don't have currently, but as you've seen over the past year, we've really been trying to develop the services provided by the Economic Development Department, and we feel that an incubator is a very important part of that suite of services that we could provide to our business community. It's a well-documented fact that if you're interested in job creation, one of the best ways to do that is through new business creation, microenterprise creation. And we're very fortunate in Deerfield Beach to have a very nice supply of advanced industries. But when those industries, because they're advanced, when they change, sometimes businesses go out of, you know, out of operation quickly. And so anytime a business does close or does change into a different direction, we wanna be able to capture that talent that's in that company so that they could potentially use their intellectual knowledge to spin off, or their expertise to spin off into a micro enterprise of their own. By doing that, number one, we've already, we've just created a job in Deerfield Beach. And if it's somebody who's talented and they get the assistance to build their business, not just, they already have the knowledge of what they wanna do, but to build the business side, that's a really easy way for us to capture that talent in Deerfield Beach, create a job, and then create a business that's gonna create more jobs. So that's essentially what this is. It's a place for entrepreneurs to come, to get business assistance, whether it's writing their initial business plan, figuring out how to get funding from the SBA. You know, maybe it's, in this day and age, of course, millennial businesses are a big thing, too. Maybe it's having a place where they could do their video blog, which is a very common way of starting their business. This is all like a suite of services that you might see at a business incubator, and it's done at a place where they would get these services for a very nominal fee, but in, in a location that's convenient for them. One of the problems that we have providing services, economic development, business development services in Deerfield Beach, is that almost ninety-nine percent of all of the services are offered in Fort Lauderdale, and they're not offered here. And so we feel that if we're able to offer these services a little closer to home, that we'll be able to, again, you know, attract startup businesses and then keep that talent here locally. Of course, the grant is a way for us to fund it. It's not, there's a draft policy that's attached to this. We are gonna try our best to see if we can start it up using grants from foundations and from the federal government.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Freedom Massey, three forty-nine, northeast nineteenth Avenue. I am for it. It sounds like Shark Tank to me. Go for it.
Thank you.
David Savinski, twenty Westbury A. This is a fantastic idea. This really fits into the whole notion that the city's been moving towards. I believe just recently, you've established some sort of a fund that, that, that will pay a new employer per job that they bring to Deerfield Beach. And, and, and I've seen this type of incubator thing work where I lived in the past, which was Las Vegas, and that was fortunately funded by a very wealthy person there. And it was a fabulous workspace. They put on seminars, they put on coding camps for kids. This is the type of thing that brings more long-term benefit, long-term resonance and growth to Deerfield Beach. Fantastic idea.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Wendellin Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. This isn't really a new adventure for Deerfield Beach, talking about incubators and providing business space for, space rather, for small businesses. Many years ago, we did have an incubator here in the city of Deerfield Beach, and I am happy to see that you're trying to bring it back, bring that kind of service back because there are small businesses that need, they can't afford to have a big rented space, and they need to have the services, they need to have someone to do their books, someone in accounting, and it's really a nice way to have folks collaborate on what they're doing. I get to know what you're doing over here, you get to know what I'm doing. So I'm very much in favor of having this. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
I'm much in favor of this. This is Isla Izies again, the palms of Deerfield. I'm so in favor of this because of the fact that I am a small business and I have nowhere to turn. I've been in Deerfield working since two thousand and two with children, with youth on AIDS. I got a proclamation from, from Mayor Gene Robb. I got one from Alcee Hastings. Mayor Lamar Fisher invited me to Pompano and let me into the Pat Lockens. Mayor Cooper, I know, you know, but she let me into her facility. I have nowhere to turn in Deerfield. I would love to see this.
Anyone else in the public? I'll see anybody come forward and close it to the public. Commissioner Hudak, and then Commissioner Preston? Yeah, first, I'm sorry. Commissioner Preston, then Commissioner Hudak?
It, it seems to me that it would be a two-phase program. Correct me if I'm wrong, it says incubator and accelerator program. So my first question would be, what would be the extent of the sitting in the incubator phase? And is the incubator phase separate than the accelerator phase? And, and in the accelerator phase, what does it do?
City Manager?
Ms. Mori?
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting the follow-up. So, that's a great question. The answer depends on the business. So an incubator, it, it just depends on what service they need. Sometimes people just need, like, a free space to come and to land, to get services. And, you know, so that could be the incubator. Sometimes people just need, also need help developing their idea. Of course, that would be the incubator. So it just depends on the need of the business, whether they fit the incubator model or the accelerator model.
Thanks. Commissioner Hudak?
Yeah. So where would we house this incubator space and where are we gonna get the, the subject matter experts?
So we're working on that already. Right now, the Economic Development Department operates out of a new building that was acquired by the CRA at sixteen oh one East Hillsborough Boulevard. You might be familiar with it. And so we have actually more space in that building than our department requires. So if we were so lucky to get this grant funding, we have space to start it up there, you know, in the short term. This is a new program, so, you know, this, we'll have to see how it goes and what the response is to it and, you know, and how, how, what our space needs are. Of course, we would be limited by space. I think that to start off, we probably couldn't have more than, you know, twenty businesses participating in this at any one time.
And the subject matter experts?
So the subject matter experts, we're slowly building relationships with them right now. You heard earlier, we, we had a very successful workforce development fair at the Hillsborough Technology Center. We've been making relationships with Broward College, we've been making relationships with Career Source Broward. And so now that we're, you know, putting all those resources together, when a business comes into the incubator, we can create literally a little mini business plan for them for what they're gonna work on while they're in the incubator and to give them a path to get out.
Because there's, there's a program called CORE, I believe is the name of it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
Assuming that we were able to get the grant, how then would we get the news out to people that might be attracted to this?
Um, that's a really good, good question. You know, part of the grant funding is to do market research into, you know, how we would reach out to those people. Obviously, social media is still just a really big thing. And again, those relationships with different agencies, Career Source Broward and things like that, as we get ourselves into the community more and more and we make relationships with businesses, we're gonna know where they're at in their business cycle. So when they're, you know, looking like they're gonna need to spin off, you know, we'll be there even before that need arises. So, you know, I don't know what the complete answer is about marketing it yet, but that's part of the learning process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number nine, inordinate City Commissioner of the city of Deerfield Beach amending City Code Section forty-six twenty-nine motorized scooters to clarify restrictions on motorized scooters to revise the definition of motorized scooters, add a definition of micro-mobility devices, and prohibiting the use of motorized scooters and micro-mobility devices on public rights of way, public sidewalks, and publicly owned property. Basically, that, those last, that last sentence indicates what this ordinance does. Prohibits these devices being used on the public streets, the public sidewalks, and parks, and other public facilities.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Freedom Massey, three forty-nine, northeast nineteenth Avenue. Say that in English now, Andy. That means that these, these motorized things, they're prohibited everywhere, then?
They cannot be on public roads, public sidewalks, and public property.
So then where could they be used? On their own property?
Private property.
So then they're prohibited. That means a bicycle that is motorized, a regular bicycle that is motorized as well?
It, it, you have two different types of devices. You have micro-mobility devices, which is any motorized transportation device made available for private use by reservation through online application. This is where you can get the bicycles and the scooters through online application. And a motorized scooter is any vehicle not having a seat or saddle for the use of the rider designed to travel not more than three wheels and not capable of propelling the vehicle at a speed greater than thirty miles an hour. So someone's bicycle wouldn't be included. If your bicycle, if you're riding a bike, you wouldn't be included within this prohibition.
Oh, I wouldn't motorize my bike. But the point is, is that, so, so even, even the kids with the, the scooters, if they're motorized, they, they can't be on the sidewalk or in the street or anywhere, correct?
Yeah, because it's, people are finding that it's causing a lot of hazards and issues.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that this is a bad thing. It's probably a good thing, but I just wanna be clear on it because, you know, there are a lot, there's a lot of them around, a lot of people. That's probably why we're talking about it.
Yeah, and there's a specific definition taken from the state law. These definitions, again, it's a vehicle not having a seat or saddle.
Oh, so if it doesn't have a seat?
Or a saddle.
Then it's prohibited, but if it has a seat, it's okay?
Doesn't come under the definition.
So a moped has a seat, it's okay?
Mopeds would have to be licensed, have a license plate on them, just like the regular vehicle.
Oh, so if it's something that needs a license, then it's okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's what's licensed, license plate. Yes?
Katie Frytag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. There have been a lot of cities that have followed this path. There have been a lot of injuries. These scooters, what people don't realize, these scooters go up to fifteen to twenty miles an hour, and we're talking the ones that you rent to ride up and down the beach in Fort Lauderdale and places like that. I know cities like Indianapolis have banned them because people do not ride them on the street, they ride them on the sidewalks, and they lose control of them because, again, they're renting them for the day, they're just out having fun, they aren't fully capable of, of controlling these scooters on a real serious basis, and they run into people and have caused injuries, severe injuries. So I know that cities like Indianapolis have banned them completely. So I think this is a great idea to keep the city moving in the right direction and to keep our residents safe on the sidewalks. We've got our bicyclists already in the street, let's keep our, our residents on the sidewalks safe.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
David Savinski, twenty Westbury A. I, I think the intent here is to get rid of those little Lime scooters, those little rentals that you see everywhere that pile up and become a mess and people have a dollar and they can, they can rent these things. I, I think the intent is great. They are annoying, they're dangerous, it's not a problem, but I think some of the wording here is a little bit broad. You bring in bicycle under micro-mobility, that would limit people renting, for example, an electric bicycle, a very popular mode of transportation these days, and they are a bicycle, and of course, they would have to abide by all of the bicycle regulations. So I don't know if that could be carved out somehow or another. You obviously make it okay because right down there, it says with the seat, so it would have a seat, so somehow having it under micro-mobility and then in the next thing, under motorized, you know, not having a seat, I think that's a little bit confusing. So that might need to be cleared up a little bit. And then moving down to where it says motorized sco, scooters and mobility devices where they are permitted, one line here, number five, states only operated during daylight hours. That would potentially apply to anyone riding a, an electrified bicycle in the evening with lights on it and so on and so forth, all the standards you would require of a bicycle, but somehow or another, that, that would seem, well, it's after dark. So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with this. I think it's a great idea, but I think it maybe needs to be just kinda cleaned up just a little bit so you don't run afoul of, of the definition of a bicycle, which is under twenty miles an hour, under seventy, seven hundred fifty watts, so on and so forth, has to be considered a bicycle under federal law. And then it falls under all the ordinances that are, that a city can make regarding a bicycle. So it just, it, it's a great idea, just a little bit of cleaning up around the edges. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public?
Mae Francis Fagan, thirty-five hundred Southwest Natura Boulevard. I'm, I'm trying to get some clarity on this. Are you saying that the residence that has those scooters, a lot of our elderly people have those scooters, that they would not be able to ride on the sidewalk?
No, those would have seats and saddles, so they would be excluded from this.
They don't have seats? They have...
Electric chairs?
Electric chairs, that a lot of our residents have.
Any vehicle not have, and let's, let's, if we could have, Anthony could speak to...
We'll get some clarity from, for you on that.
Please, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's, it's not having a seat or saddle is the definition.
That's a scooter.
That's what we're talking about. And, and just so you know, any of you, any of you who have followed this in, in cities like Fort Lauderdale where they've had some major problems, I believe including some fatalities, they, we're trying to get ahead of the game on this. We don't have these here yet in Deerfield Beach. We did have a definition on the books, but this has given us some clarity on it to make sure, should they come, that we have very clean, easy-to-understand language on what's allowed and what's not allowed. So really, it's a modification of an existing ordinance that we have.
Yeah, we, we pretty much, we basically had it prohibited before, but what we did is incorporate the state definitions. As I said, we could have, if you'd like, we could have Anthony go in more detail on it, but that, what we tried to do is clarify and use the state definitions to avoid those type of things from being able to be written on public thoroughfares.
Right.
Sideways where bicyclists and other people were walking and, and that type of thing.
But, but it is a great point in getting clarity on that. It doesn't exclude anybody who's in one of those motorized scooters for health reasons or anything like that. It, I, I don't think those, I don't think the elderly would fall under this category. They might, they might. I think anybody gets on it looks like they don't know what they're doing for the most part. Mr. Soroka, I don't think you can add anything more than what we've said. Is there anyone else in the public on this item? Will we close it? Okay, I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission comments? Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes, I mean, I, I put this on here, it's something I've been thinking about for a while now, actually, but as we monitor the Fort Lauderdale experiment, it just goes to show, I think that's, it's been a failure down there. It's well documented and well reported that they've had problems with it. There have been injuries. reported that they've had problems with it. There have been injuries and fatalities and accidents as a result of these, you know, scooters going around Fort Lauderdale. I think Fort Lauderdale is differently situated than, than Deerfield Beach. Their commission actually met to consider, they allowed it, they met and continue to allow it. They tweaked what could happen in their city. And from what I understand is like, they have the Bright Line stop in Fort Lauderdale, and so you could take the scooter from the Bright Line to go to the courthouse or La Solis. We don't have that set up here in Deerfield Beach. I mean, we have our beach. Can you imagine these, well, I'm pointing at a pier now.
They got a pier.
Going up and down Ocean Way or Hillsborough Boulevard or 10th Street, we just don't have the same setup as Fort Lauderdale. So as that experiment, and it's well documented, you can just read online anywhere about the problems that Fort Lauderdale is having. We don't need those problems in Deerfield Beach. That's why I brought this forward.
Well, I, I just was up in Washington DC and they have these everywhere and they are littering the streets everywhere. And it's comical to watch some young Capitol Hill pages try to navigate these through the many tourists on the sidewalk. It's just a disaster. Looking for a motion on this?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the city-
We, we have comments from the administration legal?
Oh, I missed the, missed the comments.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Gantz. First of all, congratulations, Commissioner Preston, Commissioner Hudak. On behalf of the staff, we certainly look forward to working with you. And also, congratulations, Vice Mayor Drosky. We can continue looking to move this city forward and making it the best in South Florida, and we're here to help you achieve that. So thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Just quickly, I know this, Andy may bring this up, but just in case he forgot, the shade meeting, we, we will be scheduling a shade meeting with the city commission to discuss litigation with Hillsborough Beach. Our attorneys for that case do want to give you an update because they did have mediation last week and want to get everybody up to par, especially the two new commissioners. Also, we have the underwater cam is back up. We have better connectivity and an upgraded connection, as well as a project that Mr. Santucci worked on, which basically put a lightning strike zone of protection around the entire pier. So that will help us greatly. And then Eric, can you quickly put on the city's homepage, please? If you can just scroll down a little. So in the middle, you'll see financial transparency tool. At the April 2nd city commission meeting, Ms. Teslia and Ms. Giordano, who work in budget and strategic measure performance, they'll actually be doing a presentation to the public on how to use this. However, we did put it up today. It's a soft launch. It's very easy. There's a how-to guide there, but if you have any questions, you can of course send an email and Ms. Teslia or Mr. Giordano will help you with that. The information is uploaded daily, so the, the budgetary or the financial numbers are actually almost real time, but certainly updated on a daily basis. So that's all I have to report. I don't know if there's anything more with-
No, just congratulations to commissioners, the new commissioners. We look forward to working with you. And yes, as your counsel, I will be asking for a shade meeting to be held, probably in about two or three, probably be in the first or second week in April, sometime around there. But to, without any objection, if you consent to that, we will schedule that at the appropriate time. That's all I have.
Next item, sir?
Item number 10, resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida urging all members of the Florida legislature to support the Workforce Inclusive Work, Florida Inclusive Workforce Act and the Competitive Workforce Act and bipartisan legislation that promotes fairness and modernizes state law by banning anti-gay and gender-based discrimination, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the Broward League of Cities, Florida League of Cities, the Broward Legislative delegation.
Commission comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Partes?
This is really a simple matter. We've come a long way to eliminate discrimination in this country, and I support this bill 100 percent. Nobody should be discriminated again, against because of who they love, how they love, what they do in private in their house, from working. It's nobody's business. What's next? How many times you make love to your wife in a week? Is that gonna be a criteria for getting fired if the boss doesn't approve? We need a law like this restricting business and cities and government from saying, "You're not welcome here because you don't think the way I do." And it's wrong. This bill prohibits anybody from discriminating whether you're male, female, transgender, gay, straight, or whatever. And I think it's needed because nobody should be discriminated against for how they think or what they believe.
Thank you, Commissioner Partes. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hudak, second by Commissioner Partes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously?
Item 11, ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach amending Chapter 98 Land Development Code, Regulations of the City Land Development Code by amending Section 9853 B1 Business Community District to increase the minimum distance separation requirements for pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries in the B1 zoning district from 250 feet to 500 feet. Basically, this is an amendment to your land development code in the B1 zoning district only. And what it does is it increase, there is presently a distance requirement of how far one medical marijuana dispensary needs to be from the other. It's presently 250 feet. We're recommending that it be increased to 500 feet. That's, that's what, and this, and the same would go for pharmacies too. We, we certainly treat pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries exactly the same. So that's, that's all this ordinance does.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. We close it to the public. Commissioner Partes, Vice Mayor Drosky, Commissioner Hudak, and then Commissioner Preston.
I would like to ask a question. What other businesses other than drugstores and marijuana would have such a restriction? Do we say that liquor stores have to be how far? Do we say?
Yes, we do.
We do. And how far is that? Liquor stores?
I mean, I don't have to off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we have those type of restrictions, and those are very common in zoning codes.
Okay. I, I would like to understand the reason why.
No, it's, it's, it's common because generally, and sometimes it's other, I mean, we had, we had a, a distance restriction on storage warehouses because they found that in the zoning pattern that you wanted to have. You didn't want to have too many storage warehouses one, one after the other. So you have them, the state has a, a distance restriction of 1,000 feet for group homes, group homes.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's a, it's a type of zoning mechanism that is frequently found and not unusual at all.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
What's, what was the rationale for the 500? Why didn't we do a bigger distance than, than that to say the 750 or 1,000? Is there, is there some judicial muster that we need to, to pass on this?
Uh, no, this was thought to be a, a reasonable amount. Because what, look, we're, we're trying to avoid the, you know, the congregation too, too close of one right after another, but we're not trying to unduly burden these, these, these things. So this is fairly moderate, but we felt that because B1 zoning districts are generally not as large, because it's community, it's, right, it's, it's a community business district, whereas a, and Eric maybe could speak better to it than me, but a, a B2 and B, a B2 is a highway business district. So you would tend to go, things are more spread out. So you might want longer distances there as opposed to here where 500 is a fairly significant district in a B1. Would that be correct, Eric?
Uh, yes, it would. So if you actually look at the map that's above you, the highlighted colors are all the B1 zoning districts. So I think it's clear to see there were, there are fairly congregated along Hillsborough Boulevard with just a small speck of them elsewhere throughout the city. And as you can see, the 500-foot distance in this area wouldn't prohibit medical marijuana distances being too far away from each other, but it would stop them from being adjacent to each other.
So we, so we thought, we looked, we looked at maps and thought this was an appropriate, appropriate and fair without, you know, being overly burdensome.
Would you have a problem with, say, 1,000 feet? If, if that were the initial proposal, forget the 500 on the table now. If someone came to you initially and said 1,000, would you, would you balk at that?
Well, I, I think our feeling would be, and Eric would have to correct me on this, that given the nature of the B1 district, I, we didn't think that was necessary, I mean, to accomplish the goal. But I may be wrong on that, Eric.
It would not be necessary to accomplish the goal, but it would not be prohibitive either. I don't think that would actually necessarily affect any existing B1s at the moment.
What?
Bert Harris?
Uh, well, the same, the same, the same argument that would be made, Bert Harris' argument for someone 499 would be the same as someone would raise at 999. As I say, I, I, so based upon what Eric says, we, we think you can do it. As I said, we thought in a measured approach that the 500 was our recommendation. We would stick with that, but obviously, this is the policy board and you can make your, 1,000 seems pretty significant, maybe 750 or something like that. But it's up to you.
Commissioner Hudak?
70 percent of the residents in the state of Florida pass medical marijuana. So there's, there's obviously a need for it. And I, I understand, you know, there are certain diseases that, that this helps with pain, helps with glaucoma. Right now, we have, from what I understand, five of these units, these facilities already in the city. How many is, is, is too many? I, I don't know. But is there a way we can relook at the ban and maybe grandfather these in? Because in six months, we've already got five of them. I mean, how many more do we really need to, to make sure that our residents, I mean, you have mail order. So, I mean, the residents do have ample opportunities to, to, to get their medical marijuana. And, and that's just a question I have.
At the appropriate, when you give me the opportunity, I'd be happy to respond.
City attorney?
Uh, yes, that is something that you can consider. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Soroka and I were talking about that. The city of Miami Beach is exploring the same, same thing right now. That's something you could do. It doesn't, we're, we're certainly suggesting that the, this approach and that are not necessarily not exclusive.
I do understand that.
Uh, but that is something, if that's something you wanted us to review at the time, when you finish the vote on this one, you could at least, you could ask staff to, to review that and consider bringing that back to you.
Commissioner Preston?
The concerns that, that Commissioner Hudak just expressed are the same concerns that I share. We have five in the city. So for those people who would have, you know, the question about the medical side of it, we now have five. And if we don't begin to really look at this in a very serious manner, it's going to increase. We're gonna have more and more and more. And I think we need to also begin to look at it from another perspective. We don't really know what's gonna happen, but what we can say that in some places, the laws have changed to include recreational use. And so if that happens, you know, it could change the climate of things. What I'm just interested in is that these marijuana dispensaries not be all over the city, really just clustering up the city. We got five. For anybody who have the medical issues, we have five of them in the city. My feeling is we don't need 10. We don't need 15. So I think we need to look at where, what Commissioner, Commissioner Hudak said about maybe banning it.
Thank you. Commissioner Partes, before I get to you, I'm gonna open this up to the public, if that's all right, since you already spoke once. Is that okay? I'm gonna open it to the public.
Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. It has been brought to my attention that we have 10 of them. How do we have, do you think we only have five if, if we have more than five?
We'll let you make your statement if you have anything else.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Of course. And, and they, I feel they definitely should be limited to the amount that we have. And also, the distances are very, very important as well. We don't want to have, and then, then you have too much competition too, and that could create a problem.
Thank you.
Gwen Clark, Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way. Thank you, Rita, for giving that number because I had heard we had more than five. And I'd like to know now, the five that you're speaking of, that you know about, where are they? Could you show on the map where they are and how close they are to each other?
We only have five, ma'am, just for the record.
Okay, and?
We only have five, and we will, we will try to point them out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five or two in the process. So we have five existing, two that are in the process right now.
Elise Miller Plack in 1998 Northeast 7th Street. I also think that we have enough here. When you passed the law, you didn't restrict how many there could be. I think we're a small community. If you have five, I think that's enough. And if people want to mail for it, they can. And I also, I was still upset over the fact that we're having medical marijuana, medical marijuana in, right in the beach area, which I don't think is appropriate there. And that was an overlooked thing. And I also think if there's any way that, if they do pass the non-medical marijuana for recreational use, make it so that they can't be switched from a medicinal to a recreational in the same facility. I don't think they should be able to be switched over. I think we should limit it and protect our community because it gets, it's just out of hand. And I don't want negative effects to affect our city. I want to protect our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Savinsky, 20, Westbury A. I'm looking at this. Where's the, there's a component in here about pharmacies as well as medical marijuana.
Yes, they have to be treated the same.
Treated the same. What about all the Walgreens and the CVS battle that always goes on? One shows up and the other one's across the street. The 1,000 foot mark might present a problem if it's B1 zone. That was one consideration. The other is, you know, the number is almost arbitrary, the distance between them. You certainly don't want them clustered together. It was 250 and then it's moved to 500. We sort of forget that what really comes into play here ultimately is the marketplace. You know, these businesses can open up and, gosh, they can't compete with the other guy. They're gonna close. They're gonna, they're gonna close up. So I think in a certain respect, it becomes self-governing. Obviously, we don't want to have one right next to the other, next to the other. But, but I, I think the idea of how many can Deerfield Beach support is probably more of the question than anything else. And that'll almost sort itself out. And the elephant in the room here is that absolutely, I'm positive of it. I've seen it happen time, we've all seen it happen time and time again. We will have recreational in this state. I'm saying within a year, possibly less. We're gonna have to address that issue at that time. It's, it's a train coming down the tracks. It's a huge source of revenue. We have a governor that's clearly not gonna want to raise taxes. So nothing like a voluntary taxation- that's clearly not going to want to raise taxes, so nothing like a voluntary taxation with, you know, vices and things like that. People love that kind of taxation. So it's inevitable, and we have to just look towards the future and stop with the scare tactics. It's not 1920 and Reefer Madness and all that stuff. It's happening. So, here we go.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner Parnas?
Look under your bed, marijuana's coming and it's terrible. It's medicine, just like my insulin that I take four times a day. Maybe we should restrict insulin. We have too many places where I can get it. It saves my life, but you're looking at it, it says, the word marijuana. It's a medicine right now. And if the voters of this state pass a law for recreational marijuana, it has to be more than 60%, then that'll become the law. You can't run away from it. Now, too many, we have too many, we got five. How many restaurants do we have in Deerfield Beach? Too many. Guess what? Restaurants open and close depending on whether they do business. Marijuana stores for medical marijuana will do the same. Now, you say, what about hotels? Do you know, next to the Hilton on Hillsborough Boulevard, not more than 150 feet or 200 feet from them, a new hotel is going up. Maybe the city should say 5,000 feet between hotels. It's an arbitrary decision. Who are we protecting here? That's my question. Why don't we restrict how many restaurants can be on Hillsborough Boulevard? We don't want them to go out of business, but if you have too many restaurants, some are going to go out of business. So why not restrict restaurants or supermarkets? Why not? Medical marijuana is here because 70% of the people of the state and 74% of the people that live in Deerfield who can vote, voted for it. I would like to see a bill restricting alcohol that creates alcoholics. That's a blight on our society. It's an illness that's been around forever. And yet, I can open up any bars I want. If I open up a new hotel, they automatically pretty much get a liquor license. Why don't we restrict those? No. But marijuana, who the boogeyman's going to get us? The whole city is going to go to hell because people who need medical marijuana are able to buy it. And I love the excuse, it's okay, but not in my neighborhood. Why not? People get sick in every neighborhood.
Can we have anybody in the audience, please?
You'll forgive me, but I get tired of the scare tactics and the negativity. I know people who live and breathe by medical marijuana because it eases the bone cancer they have that's killing them. People with epilepsy, people with severe arthritis, that they can't open their hands, that are benefited by it. Who cares for those people? We have an opioid epidemic in this country because people have become addicted to painkillers. You can't say that about medical marijuana because it's non-addictive, but you can't say it about opioids. Why don't we restrict opioids? None should be sold in the city of Deerfield. It addicts people and people die of overdoses. No, I'm sorry. I think this is wrong. You want to go to 500 feet? But from what I'm hearing, I'm sorry, I'm not afraid of the future. And I won't vote for anything that is that restrictive based on fear and non-knowledge. Medical marijuana is a medicine. Give it a new name, call it Super Aspirin Number Six, and we wouldn't have this discussion. But we are, and I will not support limiting or banning how many stores somebody with money wants to open because somebody says, not in my neighborhood. People living in every neighborhood should have access to what they need that's legal, and that's legal. I'll support this bill for 500 feet, but that's all I'll support.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
It is important that we always look at how any of these sort of issues affect the community. For those people that are affected from a medical perspective, we have answered that because you have five of them in a very short period of time, perhaps two more, that's seven. Does that mean, then, that we should have them every 500 feet? Because there are cities that actually have banned it, and here's what we will have to deal with, is that those people that can't go to a certain city, we can all go to Deerfield because they allow it. So there are cities that have banned it, and I think that we need to consider how this would affect our entire community. So if you have seven, we got five now, if we have seven, for those people that would be affected directly from a medical perspective, that's answered, that's done. And so I'm okay with that. And I think that this ban, the 500 feet, is good, but I think going forward, we should really begin to look at this to say, what do we want as a community? Because the future is coming. Are you okay with going in any section of the city where there will be marijuana dispensaries all over the place? You have to decide if that's what you want. And I say, if we're looking at it from the medical perspective, that's answered, that's done. But for the places, the cities who have banned it in their cities, those people that are interested in opening a business is going to go to where they're accepted, is accepted in Deerfield. So that means that they would multiply. We need to consider that. We need to think about that. And if the commission says, we don't, you know, we're okay with however many come here, then we have to make sure that our constituents are okay with that. And I just think that that's something that we should think about as we go forward because the laws are not going to stay the same.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Thank you. I think we need to, you know, land this plane, but before we do, Commissioners and Houdak and Preston, I think you make a compelling argument for reinstituting the ban. I look forward to one of you putting that on a future commission agenda in the very near future, but that's not what we're debating tonight. Tonight, we're talking about going from 250 to 500 feet. I mean, I certainly like 500 more than 250. I like 1,000 more than 500. So it's really what we want to do tonight. I mean, I'd like, I'd compromise at 750. If there's no, you know, if you folks aren't, you know, willing to go from 500 and above, I mean, that's as far as we'll go, but I'd like to go further than the 500 feet.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yeah, the only point, just for your consideration, when you go past, if you wanted to go above the 500, that would also apply to pharmacies. So you're hitting pharmacies and you may be making, I don't know if we'd be making some existing pharmacies more non, yeah. So we tried to, we were trying to, you know, juggle a number of things with it. That's why we chose 500.
So this is just first reading, right? We can always change it on seconds?
I would be concerned about raising it, raising it on the second.
I have a question, City Attorney, if I may.
Sure.
Right now, we have republics on Hillsborough, on Powerline, Rutherford, and Hillsborough, and across the street, less than 500 feet is a Walgreens. Is one of them going to have to close?
No, no, no one would have to close as a result of this. They arguably would become non-conforming, but I believe they're in the B, are they B two? They're in B two, so they would not be affected by it.
So this is only for B one?
This is clearly, little to the community, that's why it was definitely targeted to the small
Okay.
Community business district.
Okay.
Mr. Powers, can you kind of read for everybody what the B one zoning is? Because you can see, there's not a lot of them, they're very, very small. Can you be specific with that?
Sure. So the B one zoning district's actual name is Community Business, and as the name implies, it's intended to be businesses, commercial properties that are directly adjacent to a residential property. We have three commercial properties, zoning districts in the city, B one, B two, and B three, and they get more progressive in their uses as that number goes higher. So an example would be, you know, B one does not allow car repair. Some people consider that to be an noxious use adjacent to a residential property, where B three, which is our highway business district, would permit car repair. So the intention of the, the purpose intended of the B one district, though, is for selected commercial activities to be established in a manner consistent with the surrounding uses in districts.
Thank you. Can you tell, give us some of the uses that are allowed in B one?
Oh, sure.
Specifically?
So examples listed of uses would be things like medical office, financial institutions, business office, restaurants, convenience stores, retail stores, personal service stores like hair and nail salon, things of that nature.
Okay. I asked them to put this together because my biggest concern is clustering. I think it's completely separate arguments where the people want to, I'm not interested in limiting the number here in the city of Deerfield Beach. That's not the issue because I don't look at it as something that's wrong. And those of you who do, I don't think you've ever been to one. Go to it. I went to the opening of the very first one we had, and I sat there quietly and didn't tell anybody who I was, and I just watched. And I slowly got to meet the people that were in line there. You have Vietnam veterans that are fighting cancer that need it. I have a one with lupus who later developed breast cancer, who was having to drive all the way down to Miami with her son in order to get it before. Yes, it isn't with mail or anything like that, but I drive past the VitaCan on Powerline Road twice a day, and you would never know what it is. If you go to the one that's over in Hillsborough Boulevard, not far from Muddy Waters, it's absolutely gorgeous inside. They're absolutely incredible. I think they, I think my biggest concern is when it comes to clustering. These are very unique, this is a very unique zoning category, all right? I don't look at it as the boogeyman, but I do look at these zoning categories as wanting to give the citizens a variety, but also wanting to give something that makes sense for the location and where they're located at. A medical marijuana dispensary over on the island, while I think it's great for the people that are on the barrier island, I don't like having it there because I think it serves the public better having something else there. We have one going in there. This extension would prevent another one from going in, okay? I'm not worried about how many there are in the city because, but I'm worried about clustering. I don't want a Walgreens across the street from a CVS across the street. We don't need that. Give the residents some variety in these locations that are next to the residential, you know, if they have one drugstore, that's all they need, pretty much one drugstore. If you want to go to a different one, you got to drive a little bit further, okay? I'm worried about clustering it up, and if we have more than five, more than seven medical marijuana dispensaries here in the city of Deerfield Beach, I don't have a problem with that. I suggest, if you do, to go to one, and you will see what it is. We're all concerned, because I support medical marijuana 100%. I do not support the recreational use of it. And I have talked to the city attorney's office to see if there's any way that we can put something in place that would prevent a change of licensing or anything like that. Problem is, that's like shooting it in the dark because you don't know what the state legislature is going to bring down. They screwed it up when they put in medical marijuana dispensaries because I think people weren't uneducated on it, and they got, I'm talking about municipalities, and they got nervous, so people were banning them when I don't think they should have. And I think if they'd known what they were getting themselves into, they wouldn't have banned them. But the state legislature didn't allow for the cities to do what they felt was in their best interest. Has to be treated just like a pharmacy. You know, we're going to try to do what we can to prevent a usage that doesn't meet the medical standpoint, you know, medical marijuana need. We don't know what's going to come down the pipe. I don't think it's a year away, but it might be two, might be three, you never know. But it's coming, and I don't support it, and we'll do what we can to try to limit that. And then, in the end, the voters will have the right to be able to vote on it. But as far as this, I think 500 is reasonable. It prevents clustering in these very unique zoning category areas. I'd prefer the conversation limited to that. If we want to have discussions on something else beyond that, I'm more than happy to have that at that time. Commissioner Parnas?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. A motion for Commissioner Parnas, second for Commissioner Preston. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Approve.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
No.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
The next item is the discussion of the plastic straw ban. You've been provided with a copy of proposed legislation. Obviously, there are actually two separate bills. As is the recent habit of legislators in Tallahassee, they are talking, these pieces of legislation would preempt the city, meaning prohibit the city from enacting bans such as we have enacted with regard to plastic straws. We don't know if these are going to pass, they've been filed, we don't know if they're going to be passed. Apparently, our enforcement date is April 1, I believe.
April 1st.
So the question is, I think the thought of staff is that because of the matter of time and the energy and mobilizing to enforce something that's already difficult to enforce, that we should hold off on doing that, or at least that's one view, and the city manager could express the full panoply of views when he speaks, is to wait until we see what happens in the legislature, which should be five or six weeks probably at the most.
City Manager?
I'm not sure if Vice Mayor Drosky, since he sponsored it, if you wanted to speak before I speak, or, okay. Just quickly, we're already seeing restaurants, particularly on the barrier island voluntarily, they've already gone to paper straws. The McDonald's that's on Military Trail, just a little north of the Sawgrass Promenade, or I guess southwest 10th Street, they've actually converted to paper straws now. But we are kindly asking the city commission to at least give us the flexibility not to implement this on April 1, because if we go through these motions and then a month later, two months later, you know, it's overturned. We've just frustrated a lot of residents and business owners, and hopefully they'll continue to be community and environment-minded and just go to paper straws on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission discussion. Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, I had lunch yesterday at Muddy Waters, and they had paper straws. And I was very pleased. I had three club sodas, and they didn't soak through. They last, one straw lasted through three glasses of club soda. So they're making them better. And if they'll save the environment, I say the legislature might. No. This is, again, getting away from home rule. This is our city. We voted on a ban of plastic to help save the environment. I say we stand by their guns until they insist we cannot, which they may not do. Just because somebody introduced the bill doesn't make it so. I say we stand up like men and say, no. Until you tell us we can't, we're going to do what we voted on, and that is to save the environment. I do not I do not, will not vote to postpone this.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hudak, and then Vice Mayor Drosky?
Uh, first of all, thank you Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Drosky, for your due diligence. Um, I do appreciate it. I think it's important that we all have, you know, as much information as possible when, when we're debating these, these items. Personally, um, I hear about 90% of the businesses have already voluntarily complied with, with the, with, uh, with going with paper straws as opposed to plastic. So those businesses are now operating, uh, at a deficit to their, their counterparts who have not gone with the plast, with the paper, or still the plastic, because the paper costs a little bit more. So basically what we're doing is, is we're penalizing the, the environmentally friendly companies, um, by, by moving forward, by, by not moving forward with it, with the April 1st date. Uh, I understand the, the, the fiscal situation with regards to ramping up, and I, I am not adverse to, as, as opposed to looking at, um, uh, financial, um, penalties, but maybe we start off with warnings, so we don't have anybody in litigation or anything, and, and have this overturned or what have you. But I still think, you know, we have gained a lot of momentum with this. Uh, you know, recycling wasn't fiscally the, the best thing to do for the city, but the, the, the citizens showed us how important, uh, it was to them. And I think the businesses have shown us by their voluntary efforts that, uh, this is important to them. I would even like to find some kind of a, um, notification, I don't know, you, you call it the Emerald Turtle or something, something that they can display that shows that they're environmentally friendly, so that, you know, patrons know when they're going to their business, you know, they're going to an environmentally friendly organization. I just think that, you know what, we, we've made a decision, and, and we've gotta move forward with it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Drosky?
I mean, we have to, you know, be prudent in what we do going, going forward. And I, and I understand your argument, but this could all be for naught in 30, 45 days, depending on what the Florida legislature does. And it doesn't, in my opinion, make sense to, you know, ramp up and put in a ban that could very easily, um, uh, be taken away from us by the Florida legislature shortly. So to, to change gears midstream, I don't see the harm in, in waiting 30 to 45 days to see what happens in Tallahassee. There's two bills, a House bill and a Senate bill. They're making their way through. Whether they get passed and signed by the governor remains to be seen. There certainly seems to be a lot of momentum, from what I hearing from our state representatives, uh, that there's a lot of support for this. But we all know that Tallahassee's a funny place, and we don't know what's gonna happen. But I don't see the harm in, in, in waiting. I'm not seeking by any stretch of the imagination to undo the ban, I'm just seeking to, you know, postpone the implementation of it, uh, until we get some clarification from the state, whether they're going to preempt us or not. Because what they would do, they would wipe our ordinance right off the books, uh, if, if they pass what's being, and that's what's in the backup, if, but that's get, if that gets passed, then, um, that puts us basically back to square zero. And I don't see the harm in waiting that period of time to figure out what, uh, the, the state is gonna do on this.
What do you feel about the point that was made by Commissioner Hudak about, um, the restaurants who have got ahead of the game, knowing that this is coming, and, and knowing that the, the April 1st deadline's coming up, and the expense they put out to come in compliance? And then yet we're at, we're kicking the can down five or six weeks. There's a little bit of a punishment to them. I, it's an interesting point, hadn't thought about that, but, uh...
It is, I mean, they be in that same situation, you know, if the state acts, they're gonna be in that same situation 60 days from now, anyway. So it'd actually be more of a punishment that they continue on for the next 60 days. We're, we're saying basically, let's, let's look, let's see what's gonna happen, and then we'll react, uh, at that period of time. I don't wanna jump, you know, jump the gun. I want the businesses to know that we're acting, you know, uh, prudently with the information that we have at hand.
Okay. Commissioner Preston?
I just wanted to ask the city manager, um, is that why you wanted to delay this? For what, uh, Vice Mayor Drosky was saying?
Well, yes. Vice Mayor Drosky is sponsoring the item, but we certainly have some concerns with sending out code compliance, because it's not just a matter, if the commission even gives us direction just to give out warnings, that's giving us policy direction. Otherwise, it's gonna be up to the individual, uh, code compliance investigator, whether they get warnings and, or they start the violation process right away. Cause it's, as Andy can probably allude to more than I can, um, there's not a lot of, gray there. It's pretty much black and white. So, yes, we, we, staff does have concern about implementing this fully on April 1st.
So administratively, it will be better just to, just to wait?
Yeah, we're just, from a staff perspective, perspective, we're just asking for a delay. We're not asking for a policy redirection. That's entirely up to you, but we would like a delay, cause we feel that, uh, there's gonna be some pushback from businesses, larger businesses, or even smaller businesses that may not be able to afford, uh, to necessarily convert right to plastic, um, quickly, and also from residents that may walk into, uh, Publix and no longer be able, or Target for that matter, and be able to buy, you know, straws for their own use in their homes.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Parnas?
I I see this, to me, as saying, let's wait until Big Daddy gives us permission. Who runs the city? Us or the state? The state may not pass this bill. The state, this legislature might say medical marijuana's great, so we're gonna do recreational matter, and you can't pass any laws restricting it. So why don't we just forget about restricting medical marijuana? Because the state might, since the governor wants recreational marijuana. See, why bother? No, you put a restriction of 500 feet on marijuana stores, because we still run the city. We passed an ordinance banning straws. If you wanna limp a little bit, issue warnings for 60 days before you penalize people, and see what the legislature does. But to simply negate a law on ordinance that we've passed because of what Tallahassee might do, I think is wrong.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudak, and Commissioner Preston?
I, I do have a question. You know, going through the campaign, one of the biggest challenges that the citizens face is, is code enforcement. And, and from what I understand, that the procedure basically is, is someone has to call up before code enforcement even comes on out there. Now, I don't know if that's the same with this instance or not. Are we just gonna have code enforcement at every restaurant on April 1st to see who is in compliance or not? Is, is, is that what the plan is?
City manager?
Thank you. Quickly, um, realistically, we can't have code compliance investigators hit every restaurant, but yeah, pretty much on April 1st, it would be, this is not complaint-driven like when a neighbor calls. This is a directive from the city commission to say, no plastic straws in the city of Deerfield Beach. But realistically, no, we're not going to go out and start at every single restaurant. But that day, we will have to start, you know, somewhere. And, uh, you know, at a minimum, I would hope that we would at least be able to give, get some direction from this commission for some leniency. If that's okay, Mr. Marotis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you do that? Commissioner Preston?
Commissioner Parnas, I, I'm actually sympathetic to what you're saying. You know, there was, yeah, uh, there was an ordinance passed, and, um, but I think in this situation, we ought to give the city manager the time that he's asking, so that the logistics of this administratively would be easier. So, uh, you make a good point. But I, but I, but I'm sympathetic to the city manager.
Before you go, I, I'm gonna comment on this. I, look, I, I think we need to look at this just from a dollar and cents standpoint. I understand, and I agree, and I think it was really well put by Commissioner Preston. I agree with you, Commissioner Parnas, but, you know, we shouldn't be afraid of Tallahassee with this, it's attack on home rule, like, I get that completely. This is just a simple dollar and cents move. We're gonna waste taxpayer dollars enforcing something that Tallahassee's gonna strip us from in five or six weeks. Let's just wait a little while. If it doesn't go through, then we move forward with it. If it, if it does, then we didn't waste a lot of taxpayer dollars gearing up to go after something that we're only gonna be able to enforce for, hell, by the time they get it, they, they get cited and go before a magistrate, it's gonna be thrown out anyways. So, I mean, wh- wh- why are we wasting money? That, that's just my standpoint. I, I totally agree with you. I totally understand what you're saying, but I, I'm just looking at it from a dollar and cents standpoint, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, to not, to, you know, wait a little while. Yes, sir, you're up.
What I'm suggesting is that our, our policy be to issue a warning, to let them know that down the road, the warnings are gonna stop, and things, of course, if the state acts, a warning is just a warning.
I, I completely understand that, and I think we've already been doing educational, um, outreach right now to let people know that April 1st is coming. But just the warning process itself is a waste of manpower, in my opinion, in that short window. Even the warning would be a waste of manpower. We're already doing educational outreach to let them know that April 1st is the date. Doing educational outreach and then going in and, and issuing warnings, that's manpower hours, and, or womanpower hours as well. We don't wanna do that, in my opinion, I think it's a waste of money. Commissioner Hudak?
I would only be forward this if we have a drop-dead date that we're gonna move forward. I, I don't want, well, five or six weeks, we're gonna look at it, five or six weeks, oh, it still hasn't, it still hasn't. So if you give me a date, say May 1st, something.
Vice Mayor Drosky, and then city manager?
The legislature session ends May 3rd. The governor has a period of time thereafter to sign, uh, a bill. So I think we need to, 30 days would not be enough, cause, so I, I think it needs to go to like the middle of May, like May 15, I think would be sufficient to find out.
City man, city manager?
Yep. Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. May 3rd is when the legislative session is over. If the legislative, um, body does not pass anything, then it doesn't go to governor, and we can basically start on May 4th, um, or whatever that day may be. But if it does, then, you know, at that point, it'll depend on whether or not, uh, Governor DeSantis signs it or vetoes it. And then we can bring it back to the city commission for further discussion at that point.
Commissioner Hudak?
Sorry, one quick thing. So if it gets passed in, in, in Tallahassee, do we have any recourse at all?
Uh, no, I, I mean, if, if the state legislature has the authority, uh, the way the constitution and the statutory home rule powers read, that the state legislature has the authority to preempt the field. Now, part of it will be how the eventual bill is written. If there is any, maybe some discretion is left to the cities, we do not know.
Okay.
But so, uh, but if they preempt the field, uh, I do not see any, that's generally the end of the road.
We have a former state representative in the audience tonight, and she's smiling, so that's indicating that most likely not. It's highly, highly unlikely.
She's done that to us before.
So, let's bring this in, let's, uh, what do we wanna do?
Postpone till May 4th?
Okay. Is that enough of a date for everyone? May 4th?
I thought we were saying the 15th.
Or 15th, in case the governor does something?
We'll probably know what's been adopted.
Yeah.
All right.
10 days? Either, either May 15th.
All right.
Or, you know, I would take it May 15th.
So, so, suggestion by our city attorney would be a motion to say, extend it out till May 15th? Okay?
I'll second that motion.
Well, you need to make it first, if you don't want.
I'll approve the motion to extend it till May 15th.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Parnas to, uh, to extend our effective date for the plastic straw ban until, uh, May 15th, uh, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. Can we please have roll call?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Done.
Next?
Uh, voting delegates to the board of directors, Broward League of Cities.
Commission, who do we have currently now? Who did we have? We had Commissioner, former Commissioner Battle.
Commissioner Drosky, you were the alternate?
Vice Mayor, were you the alternate?
I believe I was second.
Second alternate. I think first alternate was Commissioner, was Commissioner Parnas, right?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, any expressed interest in this?
Uh, in which one?
This is A1 we're on right now. This is for the voting delegates for the board of directors for the Broward League of Cities.
I have interest in it, sure.
Okay. Anyone, uh, city clerk?
Uh, yes, I spoke with the League of Cities, and basically what they're saying is, if you guys want to appoint, and, a, um, a delegate right now, they would stay until the annual meeting in May. But you could also take this opportunity to appoint the delegate, voting the second, the first delegate, and then the, the second delegate right now, and they would stay in place until 2020.
Okay. What would you like to do?
If you're gonna do it, you might as well do it.
Okay, so, anyone interested in, um, making a motion to nominate, uh, Commissioner Hudak?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Commissioner Parnas, a second for Commissioner Preston.
For what?
This is for
League of Cities.
For second?
For, for the voting delegate.
So Bernie's not moving up?
No.
I, I guess we got that pretty clear, yes. Um, he, he doesn't wanna be voluntold what to do, he's, uh, so, we have, um, Commissioner Hudak would be our voting delegate, uh, for the board of directors. Our, will retain our first seat, uh, our, our first alternate as Commissioner. Parnas, who would like to be third alternate?
I'll keep second.
Or second alternate, excuse me. Second alternate would be Commissioner Drosky, then. Is that what the motion is?
That's what the motion is.
Okay.
Don't get sick.
I'm sorry? Yes, 3/20/20. We have a second?
Second.
Well, you made the motion.
Okay.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. From Commissioner Drosky, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Uh, we're on A2, consideration to appoint representatives, I'm sorry, I'm doing your job. You paid more than me, go for it.
Uh, consideration to appoint representatives to the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO board.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on this one, uh, if I could. Having fought with, and been a part of this community effort in the code committee, in the MPO, um, having fought in, on this 10th Street issue for all these years, um, I'm pretty intimately involved with the situation. I would like to go back to the MPO as a board member representing us. So I would ask for support on that, so we can continue the work that we've been doing to try to make sure that FDOT does not completely take advantage of us.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is everyone all right with that? Okay, thank you. We have, uh, motion and a second. We need roll call. We'll do roll call.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Comments by elected officials? Um, I'm, I'm gonna start with District 4. We'll let you guys back clean up, if that's all right.
The, the only, pardon me, the only thing I have tonight is, I brought up at a, a past meeting about having a joint workshop with the city of Pompano about having a joint workshop with the city of Pompano Beach. I spoke to Commissioner McGee from Pompano Beach. She brought it up to their commission, and they are enthusiastically in support of the idea. They would love to meet with their neighbors and discuss what we may have in common and just so the commissions can work together. So I would like to see us, you know, have a motion tonight directing our city manager coordinate with their city manager. Something in the future for us to, you know, maybe we'll have one in their city, one in our city, but I'd like to see that happen since they're very much in favor of it.
It's a great idea.
See you, manager.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Drosky, actually, I don't need a motion. It's just, I think, general feeling is to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Other than that, I want to welcome my colleagues on board. If tonight is any indicator of what the future holds, I'm very optimistic. I appreciate the well-reasoned, thought-out debate tonight, and I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Parnas?
I've been riding with the police lately, and I intend to keep riding with them to get a feel, especially in District 3, of what they do, how they do it, and what the problems are. And it's an enlightening experience. I recommend everybody on the commission do it. It gives you a sense of how valuable and how hard our police work and what they do. I was involved with a woman who accidentally took too many pills and how the fire department's ambulance crew and the police convinced her to go to the hospital where she didn't want to go. There was a drug bust, many tickets getting out. They go through the neighborhood, you may not see them, but they are through each district 10 or 15 times in one shift, looking for problems. And they back each other up. And I will continue the experience because it helped me grow and understand what the problems are in keeping everybody safe and what they do. And I recommend to all commissioners that you take the time and get the experience. It's a good experience. It's educational, and I plan to do it again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Preston?
Let me just say that it's an honor to be here with my colleagues. It's an honor to serve. I served this city for 26 years. As a firefighter, paramedic, and that always has been one of the most valued experiences that I've had in my life. During the campaign, I started going door-to-door probably late December, the early part of January. And you could hear the voice of the residents telling me their concern. And I'm encouraged with this commission because their concerns are my concerns, and I really believe that whatever their concerns is also your concerns. I think that it is important that in any particular district, I'm sure that Commissioner Hudek heard things from his constituents as well, but I would like this city to grow to a position of whatever your problem is, it's my problem as well. That it's not just District 1 or District 2, 3, or 4, that whatever constituents have a problem, we will work best is when everybody in each district recognizes that a neighbor, a part of our city, that constituent is hurting. So therefore, whatever the issue is, my concern is, you know, as well. And so it becomes our job to bring forth whatever their concerns are, whatever the issues are. I'm going to do that, but I was just sitting here tonight listening as how some of the issues were being solved. I am very encouraged that there will be good dialogue, strong debates, but in the end, that we're obligated to do what is best for our citizens because I can tell you, going door-to-door, and I did it for a long time, there, I represent a district that's asking to be heard, but I'm going to be eager to say to so many, I really believe that the people that we will be bringing these issues to will hear you, will hear your concern. And that is important because it's encouraging, it's inspirational. And we all live in the city of Deerfield Beach. People in District 1, whatever their issues are, it's my issue. District 3, it's my issue as well. District 4, it's my issue as well. And collectively, just what if there's an issue in District 2, it's all of your issues. So it's not one group's problem, but all of our problems. And because I'm working with a talented group of people, I believe us to be problem solvers. So, you know, I really believe that there's going to be some good things that's going to happen for all of our districts. I'm eager to have that dialogue with you, but I'm also encouraged by the people that I'm working with. And I want to thank you again for having open minds and accepting me to this commission.
Commissioner Hudek?
I definitely want to echo your statements. I agree wholeheartedly with everything that you just said. And I have, the campaign I ran was one of respect and admiration for not only the citizens but everybody up here, previously on the dais, as well as on the dais now. And there are times that we're going to agree to disagree, and that's fine. We can do it in a respectful manner. I've said that, if I've said that 100 times, I've said it once. And just, you know, going through today, I see that everybody up here, their heart is in the right place, their mind is in the right place, and I am honored to serve with all of the individuals up here. So I want to thank you as well for allowing me the opportunity to represent the citizens of District 1 up here because I really feel that we have a great opportunity to move the city in a great, great direction. A couple of things I did want to announce really quick. Starting April 13th, District 1 will be having Saturday hours to follow Vice Mayor Drosky's lead on that. So it'll be from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, and we'll have it here in the office at City Hall. So if there are any citizens in District 1 who need to speak with me, you know, face-to-face, we're also going to be having District 1 meetings. Right now, the first one is tentatively scheduled for April 24th, and we'll have that at the CRA building. Again, Glenn had mentioned sober homes, so that's something that I want the city attorney to educate me on, on what we can do about the sober home challenge that we have in the city. And I'd also like the city attorney to look at reintroducing the ban on the marijuana distributors, grandfathering the ones that we have in now. I do respect the mayor's opinion on that matter, but I'd also like to explore it further to see if we can come to a win-win solution on that. Thank you, everybody.
Very proud of our Ocean Rescue team, who was, received the honor of being the Florida Beach Patrol Chief's Association Beach Patrol of the Year. That's for the entire state of Florida. That is an incredible achievement. Not only that, our specialist, Roman Strominger, was named lifeguard of the year for the entire state of Florida. That is truly amazing. Dave Brown and team, they've done an amazing job. Roman is the name, Roman Strominger is the name of our lifeguard of the year. Absolutely outstanding. Two other employees I really want to highlight because I've received so many compliments about the work that they do. People just approach me and say, hey, I just want you to know. And I think, I encourage us all to do that because I think our employees deserve that. We hear it out there in going all the different places we go. People will approach us and let us know, and maybe we should do that at the end of the meeting. Pick an employee that you've heard something good about and just kind of highlight them and talk about that a little bit. I just want to mention two briefly, Joe Alberino, Alberino, our recycling drop-off location. I can, if there's ever been an ambassador of the city of Deerfield Beach, from an employee standpoint, it is him. What an amazing individual, and I cannot tell you how, if we got a dollar for every compliment we got about him, we would, we could lower your taxes like in half because it's amazing how much people appreciate the work he does. And Adel Truzino, the work she's done with Parks and Rec with some of these special events that she does, bringing creativity, a joyful spirit, and an outstanding job with the work she does. So many people pull me aside and tell me what a great job she's doing. So just want to say thank you for those two individuals. Did happen to attend the National League of Cities Conference in DC last week, and as a matter of fact, we were, the city manager and I were up there on election day here. And interesting, several things came up, two things, two big takeaways that I think we need to talk about. I know the city is already working on this with staff, but I think it's important for us, sitting up here, to educate ourselves on the opportunity zone designations that we have in the city of Deerfield Beach. I sat in a seminar, and they talked about, well, they talked about the positives of it, there are also some negative aspects of it, and I think it's something we should probably make sure that we have a plan in place. We're not going to be able to control necessarily the type of development of what can go on in those opportunity zones, but we do have the ability to influence it. So I know staff is already working on having a plan, and that's what we need to do because otherwise, there are some negative aspects of the opportunity zones, and I'll let you, I'll let staff kind of educate all of us individually, rather than me try to regurgitate it here tonight. The other thing that was interesting, and whether, no matter what you feel about this individual, this person came out and spoke, and they, I took away this as a great idea. Kellyanne Conway actually came out and spoke to the group, and she was talking about the opioid epidemic, which we were talking about. One of the things they said is, is, look, the opioid issue in the country is not limited to race, age, wealth. It's in every single corner of this country, everywhere. One other thing, and you can say what you want, whether you feel people bring it on themselves and they get hooked, or whatever the issue is, it's about saving lives. We heard tonight, we talked about BSO and how we have a, someone who does not sound like he's a good individual, they still went out there and saved that individual's life. I am sure that Commissioner Preston did that many a times in his line of work, saving people's lives that probably were not good people. This isn't about that, with good or bad people. This is not what the opioid epidemic is. But the suggestion she made is everywhere we have a defibrillator, we should have a Narcan pen. We should have staff trained to be able to do that. Because if someone has, what the Narcan drug does is it reverses the effects of a drug overdose. So if someone's at a ball field, or someone's in a city building or something like that, and they have an issue or a problem, that happens, we have a defibrillator there if they have a heart attack, if they're having this medical emergency, we can save their life with a simple, I believe it's an injection. Why don't we have them everywhere? So, you know, as, with the upcoming budget, that might be something we can talk about doing, and having them wherever we have in city facilities, we have those.
You've got to make sure you train people properly to go on that.
The district program was training it all, actually.
Okay. So, yeah, but no, training without, just like a defibrillator, I don't want my kids grabbing it trying to.
But the injection, though, I don't know that because you're injecting and someone's in their body, that a layperson is allowed to do that, so you'd have to check.
Okay.
Well, police know, carry it.
Right, police, but I'm talking me.
Right. Right, no, no, this is about, it's about having it available.
It's a great idea.
But training certainly would be the aspect of it. City manager?
I was just going to say, we'll certainly research that for the budget workshop and bring back a recommendation.
Just to find out what the cost would be to do that, but training would absolutely be a part of it. So I thought that was an excellent suggestion. And great suggestion on the joint workshop with the city of Pompano Beach. Commissioner Fisher is doing that on a county level with the mayors in the northeast region of Broward County. Mayor Bogan is doing that with all the mayors in Broward County. And it's really great to have that cooperation with other cities, which is weird considering we have one of our neighbors suing us, but I won't get into that too much. The other thing is, I do want to say this, welcome. Really looking forward to working with you all. We've done this before, and it's great. It is great. We're looking, I look forward to it. Congratulations. Congratulations on running honorable campaigns as well, and that is difficult in these times as we know. But we look forward to, I will say this, and we, you used to make a comment about standing up like men, and I went, wow, that's rather sexist, but then I thought about it, this is the first time on this dais in a very long time there has not been a female up here. That's not necessarily a good thing. I'm not saying it is. It's actually not. But I will say this, all of us, I think there's, I think there's a mutual respect amongst all of us, and I look forward to working with you, and I will give you a wholeheartedly on board, so. Thank you very much. Without, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Mike.
Chief Brimlow. Chief Brimlow.
I need Brimlow in the back.
Which one?
The 25th? I might have a conflict.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
I haven't cleared it yet, no. Brimlow, Brimlow!
Derek can show you right there.
I'm still working on it. It's not clear yet.